It's nine AM, I'd like to call the board supervisor meeting. The order, you got your application from?
Yes, sir.
Stand by this, please.
Heavenly Father, this morning, we want to say thank you for your grace, your mercy that's sufficient to all mankind. Father, as we begin this day, we want to thank you for life, health, and strength. We want to thank you for our officials, our supervisors, the presidents, God, and all of those that it takes, God, to conduct the county business. God, as we go forth today, we ask that you will be done. Bless those that are here, God, those that I will be tuning in, God, and as we get ready to handle your business, God, just lead, guide, and direct us. In Jesus' name we pray. And everybody say amen.
Amen.
Praise the heavens to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion for the approval of the document? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, like I said. Talking about Supervisor Hutchins, in discussion. We're all ready to vote, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. I, in opposed, ladies have standing right. I now beg them to roll call an officer. Supervisor Gray? Supervisor Hutchins? Supervisor Belgium? Supervisor Wilson? Deputy Clerk Paige Dean? Jackson Clerk Randy Lewis? Attorney Scott Slowman? And I am present. Right, good war.
Yes, sir.
Is Lewis not going to be here today?
She said if you need her.
All right, good war.
Thank you, President Gaines, and I appreciate y'all hearing me just more than I'm here. I asked for an amendment to the budget for the Chancery Court on my own behalf and on behalf of Judge Davis, too. He couldn't be here today, he's out of town. Point appointment, but let me tell you what's going on. So, for the last couple of years since May of twenty-one, Judge Davis has been without a staff attorney. He has not hired a staff attorney since he lost his last one, who was Ms. Bonnie Minapace. And she went to work for Child Protective Services. But anyway, he has interviewed and has found a staff attorney, and our budget is not sufficient to cover that staff attorney's salaries. And I'm going to tell you why. It's a little bit interesting the way this happened. So, eight years ago, when we came to the board, and I'm not sure if any of you were on the board at that time or not, but Judge Davis and I came and asked that the county would fund two staff attorneys. And the board voted to do that. At that time, each staff attorney was making sixty-five-five, and with benefits, it was a substantial amount. The statute provides for the state court judges, that includes Circuit and Chancery Court, that we're allowed forty thousand dollars for a staff attorney, forty thousand dollars for a court administrator. And when we came to the board, we thought we only had forty thousand each available for our staff attorney. And as it turned out, the finance department of the Supreme Court, rather than crediting forty thousand to the staff attorney and forty thousand to the court administrator, they credited the entire eighty thousand that's available to the staff attorney, and which was a great windfall for Adams County, and that's why our budget is so low. I don't know if y'all have a copy of our budget, but I do. And for the year, for the last two years since we lost our one court of staff attorney, we've been budgeted thirteen thousand dollars for staff attorneys. So, the original agreement with Adams County was that they would pay thirty-three thousand dollars for each staff attorney. And as it turned out, they were only paying seven thousand dollars since the total eighty was credited to the staff attorney. So, that's why our budget is so low. But that's going to remain, that's going to remain the same up top of the Supreme Court. And they said, for some reason, that's how their computer does it. They know the statute says one thing, and they're working on amending the statute that the statute says forty and forty, but they apply the eighty to the staff attorney first. And so, while that's been a great windfall for the county, and that's why our budget is so low in that regard, where you have to make it up is with the court administrator. And that's the second reason we're here today, is that we, Judge Davis and I, we've always, at least for the last seven years, have shared Ms. Carla Allgood as our court administrator. We've had a lot of problems with it, and we voted this year to hire a deputy court administrator and got approval from the administrative offices of course that we could hire a deputy court administrator who would assist us. She would mainly work for Judge Davis, and Carla will continue to work for me. The other thing is that you may be aware, from the Circuit Court, the legislature voted to give the judges and the staff a raise last year, beginning this year, January. And that's in effect now. They approved raises for both our current court administrator, Ms. Allgood, and for Ms. Freiburger. And I gave y'all a handout for what we're requesting to amend this year's budget. And for the staff attorney, that's line item number four oh five on our, what do you call it, budget. And line item four oh five, we're currently budgeted thirteen thousand. As I said, we were originally-
Excuse me, Judge, what department are you listed?
Chancery Court.
Oh oh one, what's the next three?
On the budget?
Yes, sir.
Where do you see that, Mr. Slowman?
Oh, one sixty?
One sixty, thank you.
First one's the fund, second one's the department, third one's the judge.
Okay, oh oh one, one sixty, this says general counting, Chancery Court. But in any event, for the staff attorneys, we're only budgeted thirteen thousand. As I said, it was originally supposed to be sixty-five, excuse me, sixty-seven thousand annually. That's been amended over the years for a couple of reasons. One, because we only have one staff attorney right now, most of her salary is being paid by the state. And two, Judge Davis does not have his own staff attorney. Last year, we only used, we were budgeted thirteen thousand dollars. We were only used twelve thousand nine hundred fifty-one, which means the state picked up most of that. And, let's see, we, let me go back to Ms. Freiburger, who works for me. She's currently, well, she started eight years ago at sixty-five-five. She's never had a raise. She is at the top of the tier for staff attorneys. And what that means, there are six different levels for staff attorneys, and it's based on years of experience. And she's actually practiced law for thirty-five years, and is at the very top tier for staff attorneys. And she's been approved for a salary of eighty-six thousand dollars, which is what I'm asking the county to approve. What it's going to amount to, if she's raised that, beginning, we've done it for April the first, April the first through September the first, with people about twenty-seven seventy-six per month, or sixteen thousand for the remainder of this year. We've been budgeted thirteen thousand, so we would need, assuming we haven't used any of that money that's already been budgeted to us, we would need an additional three thousand six hundred thirty-six dollars for the twenty-three year. Judge Davis, on the other hand, he's interviewing a young lady who would be at the very bottom of the tier for staff attorneys. She would just be getting out of school. And we anticipate that there will be no cost to the county for her because the AOC will cover her entire salary. And then, the balance of over the eighty will go for the court administrator, the deputy court administrator. And so, that takes us to line item four oh four on our budget, which is for the court administrator. We're currently budgeted twenty-four thousand dollars annually. Ms. Allgood's salary is thirty-seven five, and she's been approved for an increase to forty-two thousand, beginning April first. And that would amount to three thousand dollars per month, or eighteen thousand for the remainder of the year. And then Judge Davis's, I used the highest figures for him. They gave us different figures for a lower amount, and then also the approved amount of the forty-two. I just used the forty-two, so it should not be that much. But using the highest figure, we're going to need thirty thousand from Adams County for the twenty-three budget. We've been budgeted twenty-four thousand for that line item, so that would mean we would need about six thousand seven hundred and seventy-four. And as I said, we've not used any of that money, or we did not, for twenty-twenty-two. And for twenty-twenty-one, that fiscal year, we did use some of that money, and I'm not certain why, because since we were sharing, that staff attorney, I mean, excuse me, that court administrator should not have been that much. But there's also, Mr. Slowman, if you're looking at those budgets, we were on the, on that first zero one one sixty. For twenty-twenty-two, we were, we had an unencumbered balance of sixty-three thousand four ninety-eight for the twenty-two budget. And then the year before that, for twenty-twenty-one, we were eighty-three thousand unencumbered budget. And the reason that is, besides the fact that we shared the court administrator and didn't have a staff attorney for those two years, or Mr. Judge Davis did not have a staff attorney, the reason, another reason why we were over budgeted was that we were short a court reporter, which last year, we did hire a third court reporter, which that'll be reflected on this year's budget already. Or, excuse me, we'll be using that money for what the court, I mean, court reporter. I'm sorry, I don't feel real good. I don't have COVID, but I've been tested for that, but I'm a little under the weather. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. I thought Ms. Lewis was going to be here today. I've been over these numbers with her, and she was going to pull up the budgets for us and for y'all to look at. And if y'all need to look at that, that's fine. We, as I said, are hoping to implement the raises and the additional staff, well, excuse me, the raises by April first. The additional staff will come until later, because the lady that Judge Davis is interviewing for the staff attorney is still in school, she won't get out till May. Her salary would be at the bottom then, even though I used the highest figures, her salary would be at the bottom at that time, which probably June would be as early as she'd be raised, I mean, hired. And then she has to take the bar exam, so her salary wouldn't go up until she passed at the bar. And we don't know when that'd be, maybe next year, so we don't know. And then, he does, he has interviewed two court administrator, two different people for court administrator position.
Hey, excuse me, will you mute your phone? Will you mute your phone? Will you mute your phone? Share, will you mute your phone? Share.
Anyway, he's hoping to hire his court administrator by April first.
Do y'all have any questions?
Well-
For me?
I heard what you said, according to what you two papers, maybe there'd be an increase of ten thousand four hundred and ten dollars, but will we, to the annual budget, but I would say we probably need to hear from, like saying Ms. Brandy was not here today.
That's right.
And you do have a little time, and I appreciate you coming forth early.
Thank you.
Earlier enough for us to have the financial officer to take a look at it.
Thank you.
And as long as our financing is in order, I don't see a problem. That's my thought, only, any comments from the rest of the board?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
My only comment is, you say the county going to have to come up with how much additional money for these raises?
For this year, it would be, for the line item four oh four, it would be six thousand seven hundred seventy-four. And for the line item four oh five, it would be three thousand six hundred and thirty-
Ten thousand four hundred and ten dollars, that's just enough?
Yeah, it'd be totaled by ten.
Paige, have you and Brandy gone over all this, or is it something that you're kind of- It's Brandy, okay.
So, Judge, we are, when we get with Ms. Lewis, when she in, and I mean, I'm pretty much sure we have her taken care of before.
Okay, well, I appreciate y'all's time.
And I appreciate you telling me earlier. All right, any special presentation?
Thank you, George.
All right, and I know Chief John Pope, he was going to be running, little lady hadn't made it yet. Don't bother killing the floor, they're here. County Children's Association.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kimberly Ford, I'm a family advocate with Candy B Cheer to Solutions. And we're located out of, well, we're really located over eighty-two counties in the state of Mississippi, such as Jackson, Greenville, Olive Branch, Meridian, Tupelo, Hattiesburg, Storksville, and Macomb, and Gulfport. I want to stop by briefly, just speak to y'all, to tell you all about our service. And we are a free solutions resource service that connects families and individual resources. We were originally known as Mississippi Children's Home Society, which I think was here in Natchez a long time ago. Anyone can be referred or enrolled. We offer services such as providing solutions that will protect children and allow them to safely remain in their homes, stabilize families and improve family functions, enhance parenting skills, which we do, do active parenting classes with the families in the home. We do go to the homes and do active parenting classes. We do also link the families to resources for, such as community resources, such as food stability, utility assistance, unemployment, housing. We also do education classes such as mental health challenges, substance abuse, teen pregnancy, child abuse, neglecting society. Within last year, we have served over like twenty-nine hundred families, and we're looking to increase that within the years to come. But once again, we are a free service for the families and the community. We can be reached at one eight hundred three eight eight six two four seven, or at mycandy.org slash link. Those bookers that I provided for you are different services that we do offer that's upon the Candy B umbrella, that other than link, that we can provide services to the families.
All right, well, I appreciate you coming and offering those, so they know that you have those services in our community for free, because they are definitely needed. So, we'll definitely keep your information and get your some, get your information, share it to some of the necessary people.
Okay.
And we'll look forward to you serving our community, and we thank you for coming. Do the rest of the board have been coming?
I'd like to say, President, and where are your offices located?
Um, my office, well, our main office is located on Lakeland, but we, like I said, we have an office. My office is located in the Macomb area, but we do have offices all around the state of Mississippi. But our main office, like I said, was in Jackson, Greenville, Olive Branch, but you know, those offices serve like up before in Mississippi, Tupelo, Hattiesburg, Storksville, and Gulfport. But my office is located out of Macomb.
And how can we get the service here?
Um, like I said, the number that's on the, I attached my business card on there as well. You know, if you all have a family that's needing referred, you can give us a call, or you can go, they can go online and do the refer, and our main office will contact us once the referral comes to us.
Again, we appreciate you definitely extending those services this far out. And so, we'll be looking forward to working with y'all.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for your presentation.
All right, thank you.
All right, and I just think I seen Chief walk in.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Greetings to all of you ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you today. It's always great to be back in Natchez and in Adams County. I am Chief John Pope, I'm the president of Mississippi Firefighter Association. I've had the honor and privilege to serve as president of this great association for twelve years. And this year, we are celebrating our one-hundredth anniversary. The Firefighter Association was founded on February fifteenth, nineteen twenty-three. So, we celebrate our one-hundredth anniversary this year, and we're going to celebrate our one-hundredth anniversary here in Adams County. We're going to be hosting our annual conference in Natchez again. We have done so several times before, and y'all have always rolled out the red carpet and treated us with great hospitality, and we can appreciate that. Just can't tell you how much we appreciate it. We are coming to you today to tell you a little bit about the association, about the conference. The association represents firefighters from all throughout the state of Mississippi, from all eighty-two counties, municipalities, small towns, larger communities, bigger cities, large and small. We represent them all, volunteer and career. We have over thirty-eight hundred members of the association in the state, and we are growing and enlarging. Our membership is the largest it's ever been. And our conferences are some of the largest attended to record. We have, on average, about six hundred to seven hundred firefighters that attend our annual conference every year. We have multiple vendors that come in, makes a very large economic impact on the counties and cities that we come to. It would be no different here in Natchez and Adams County. Last year, we were in Vicksburg, they competed to get our conference again this year, and we chose Natchez to come to. And we're actually going to do Adams County and Natchez two years in a row, which is unusual. We generally don't do the same municipality or county twice in a row. We try to move around, but Mr. Walter and the staff at the Convention and Business Bureau and at the Convention Center have really put together a great package for us. We always enjoy working with your staff here at Adams County, and the Natchez staff will be able to have a good conference that's beneficial to our members. So, what we're coming to you today is asking for your support of the conference. We're asking you to consider financial contribution and supporting that to bring those six hundred plus, seven hundred firefighters and their guests and those vendors to come to Natchez Adams County. The economic impact that we estimated that our conference brought to Vicksburg last year was close to a million dollars. We had vendors that came in, stayed in hotel rooms, they bought meals, they provided others, they used other services, hotel rooms, et cetera. You take in that you have six hundred plus attendees, that's a lot of hotel rooms. The block at the Natchez Grand, which was the whole hotel, was blocked, the block was completely gone in less than twenty-four hours. The other hotels, we've gone into other overflow hotels, and the blocks there have been filled very quickly and stuff. So, it's a, it's a big economic driver in the communities. We have received commitment and support from the city of Natchez and from the Convention Bureau and such. We're just asking y'all to consider that. We think that it's a good thing, you've got a lot of your firefighters in the county that are members of the association. They've been a great support to us and help to us in the past, and we're just asking y'all to consider that. We just, you know, we think that we've got a good thing, and with your support, we think we can make it even better. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have, and try to provide any information that can-
All right, open up to the board, if you have any questions. Do I have any question? Well, I appreciate you coming, and it seemed like Natchez is getting popular for conferences, because we have supervisor conferences here, and-
That's right.
And we've got a few more conferences coming.
I think the clerks were here before, I believe, they had them and stuff. It's just, it's just inducing, y'all have just a great, there's so many different things we can take advantage of.
Okay.
And so, we just appreciate that very much. We'll be glad to provide you some more information. I asked this morning, I appreciate y'all allowing me to come in so quickly. I actually flew in this morning, I landed about five forty-five coming from a large industrial fire, and got home, took a shower, shaved, put on some clothes, because I didn't pair a cover off to begin with, and made my way from Collins over here. But I'll leave some business cards, and then I'll also ask if I can get a card and we can send a formal request letter and such. But I wanted to try to get on the agenda and speak with y'all as soon as I could, so you could take that into consideration. But again, thank you very much.
All right, well, we appreciate it, and we'll definitely leave the information with the, with the secretary to send us a formal request, and we'll take it plenty into consideration. We appreciate you coming, appreciate you coming down, and we'll be looking forward to you hosting your conference in Natchez.
Thank you very much. And we invite y'all to take part in the conference and come, come visit with us. We're going to have a lot of great hospitality events, and we just look forward to seeing y'all there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kenneth Caruso, Sandman Creek Water Association. Mr. Caruso, Sandman Creek Water- All right, we will go with Kevin Waugh, Texas Bay.
Both of those two people may end up getting deferred, I don't know if they're there or not. Sandy Creek had reached out to me, and I hadn't had a chance to get back with them regarding central water, or maybe coming back.
All right.
Has she done a part of the Texas Bay or is it something else?
No, this is part of the Texas Bay.
My understanding was that she was, that that application was coming at the next board meeting. That's what I was, well, this is, the city had granted an exemption, and then they had to come and apply for, from the county.
All right, we got Mr. Charles Moore, Justice Court.
He can give me their-
I'm going to be there tomorrow to, well, I'd like to welcome y'all to my place, and I'd like to say to the president, the board, the board of supervisors, I'm glad to be here, wish you all this morning.
Okay.
First time I've been in a place like this, you know, I don't, I don't feel right, grip. And I would like to say, I'd like to turn a complaint about Justice Court. My name is Charles Moore, and I'm filing a formal complaint against an individual in Adams County Justice Court. On January twentieth, twenty, twenty-
Is this about-
Seventeen twenty-
Is this about Judge Mar?
Huh?
This Judge Mar, is that the- Judge Mar?
I can't hear too good.
The Justice Court Judge?
Right.
Judge Mar?
Right.
Okay, so she's a separate elected official. This board doesn't have any authority over Judge Mar. They do have authority over the staff, the clerk-
Over that staff?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, but not over the judge. If you have a complaint with the judge, you can file a judicial performance, that would be a complaint again. Or you can file an appeal with her decisions. That's just head flat.
I'm gonna continue. So you, Mr. Moore, so, wait, so you having a, so you wanna complain against the staff? Make a complaint against the staff?
Or the judge.
The judge.
Yes.
Staff, are you complaining against the staff? Understand?
Not the staff, the judge.
Yes, the staff and the judge. Okay, he said staff and judge. Alright, well, we can hear what you got about the staff, but the judge is gonna be a separate. You'll have, uh, have her through judicial performance, uh, what he said, the lawyer said. You can, we can hear the staff part of it, but the judge gonna have to be ordered to do something else. Just break.
Could you look up Judicial Performance Committee and get an address where he can, let him know, forward this to Judicial Performance Committee?
We get it, son.
Well, I, I approached, I approached the straight to the staff.
Okay.
And, uh, when I approached it, I approached with the letter that I gave him, which was, so, and, uh, lady for four thousand dollars, they said, you can't do that here. Well, I dropped it to, I went to court upstairs, and they gave me, uh, say you can't, you can't do four thousand dollars here, you can do two thousand, I mean, three thousand, five hundred. So I come back, I, well, I drop it down to thirty-five hundred, then I go that way. But I told the clerks that, and the clerks, they, uh, they took my money and get, went through the thirty-five hundred. Okay, after I done that, then they hit a court. Then the judge come in and said, uh, well, I can't, I can't do this. But, but they took my money and then give it back to me. So that's what I'm here for, filing against the clerks and.
Yeah, I got, so basically what he said is, he had a lawsuit or something out for four thousand dollars. They told him he could not do it for four thousand dollars, because it was too much, Justice Court only had thirty-five hundred. So he went back and told the clerks that he wanted to sue him for thirty-five hundred. They took his money and said he could sue him, and when he went to the court, then the judge said they couldn't sue him. So Scott, what do we go with that for? I know can't do nothing about the judge, but the clerk getting his money, filing, uh, having to file for court, what did they do?
Did the court, if they were ordered him to be reimbursed to his filing fee, they certainly could do that, and we could re- reimburse him at that point. Uh, I would have to check the rules, because it's been a little while since I've looked at it. My understanding is if you're over your jurisdictional amount, they're supposed to transfer the case to the right court, not, not, uh, not just dismiss it, and so that would have put him in the right court, and he wouldn't have had to have done his feet.
He said, he offered it, well, that's what he said, he offered to drop it from four thousand, thirty-five hundred.
I understand that, but, but he, and the judge refused it, and probably rightfully so. If you have a four thousand dollar claim, you can't just say you can get thirty-five hundred, it's, that's not the way the jurisdictional one's worked. But if there was a jurisdictional issue, I believe the problem should have been to transfer it to the right place, not making the boost his claim or, or whatever. But we can look into it.
I routinely do that when I'm having to fix people. But if they owe me four thousand dollars, and I know the limit is thirty-five, we go below it, just as, all we're gonna do is collect our money. I don't know if that's right or wrong, but that's what they've done. That's all he wanted to do.
I, I, I hear everything, but I thought we was talking about the money that he paid and trying to get the money back. So if, how did you do that?
Well, was the process served or not served? Because most of that money goes to serving for your constables, but they stand up and they serve, then that money's been paid by the county.
Let me tell you how, how this happens sometimes. Like, he might say, uh, if it was Oak Street, number forty-four Oak Street. When we get there, it might be that you went to forty-four, those numbers don't always be right sometimes. It's a lot of times we make mistakes, and I'm, I'm, I, I always admit that when I make a mistake, you made a mistake. That right there, I don't even remember going to that address, when I checked the address last week, it was supposed to be number four. But it was a fourteen on the other side of, couldn't even see, only thing we could see was number four. So when you get there and get to court, judge opened up the, the docket, and see that, uh, he said he's there, but the other person's there. Find that address, then you re-serve that to the right person, then you come back to court and get it straight.
Yes, and really he does a good job of tracking down.
As I'm reading here, and I read the law of it, and as I'm reading here, it says that he was never served. So he never got served.
He was never served.
He was never served.
But he, he, in his situation, he didn't like the way that he was treated and talked to by the judge. And, and I don't like that anyway, anybody up there, if people go to the polls and vote for you, you need to learn, learn, well, she ain't from here, no way. But anyway, you need to learn how to talk to people and treat people right, so when they do that to you and talk to you, they kinda like go to the polls and get get, get, get themselves out of it.
There you go.
And that's the way you do it, low down and buried, and we vote for you, you don't talk to us like that.
But as far as the refund, if the Jennifer Waters had refunded, it'd be refunded, but it's not.
So what, well, let's, let's figure out what, where he go from here for about the refund, so what he need?
It's only eighty-five dollars.
It's to you, how much?
Eighty-five dollars, you, like, y'all will be, take care of it, he, he wants his eighty-five dollars back.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
This is to the attorney. So you, you saying the same judge that he's finna file, uh, something to the Judicial Performance Committee is gonna be the one to determine whether he did his money back?
Well, you can file a lawsuit.
I didn't ask the question.
Yes, sir, if you file a lawsuit and you pay the, you, you gotta pay the fee, and if it's a bad lawsuit, you still owe it. I mean, you know, those fees aren't refundable just because the suit didn't go your way.
How does he get it bumped up to the next court to the?
And that's probably, it should have been transferred over, or, or, it's not, it's, it's, it's county court.
County court? So how do we, how do, how does he get it to county court?
Well, it's dismissed without prejudice, if it's, if it's a subject matter thing, you just would file with the circuit clerk's office.
You, you know what to tell him, uh, what it be, that he needs to go to the circuit clerk and, and file?
I'll, I'll take him over, I'll personally take him over to make sure, because I don't like.
Refile for the four thousand.
Right.
Plus whatever else he lost.
I'll make sure that I take him, I want to, get everybody in this town, if you're from here, you vote for people, I want you to do it right.
Well, I went to, I went to a court, and they told me, I hate giving lawyers. Then get them to write a report, then come back to circuit court.
No, that's not true.
But that, that's money still being lost right there.
Yeah, but it's gonna have to go through judicial. The board does not have the jurisdiction over the court. You know, the court, uh, there's elected officials, they, the judges, they have the power over the court. So you'll have to write the judicial, and, uh, we'll make sure between attorney and what it be get you in the right direction, so you can.
Basically, what he tell, these people you send up, up here talking to, they can't do nothing with the judges.
Right.
But we gonna do, do something with on election day, okay? Alright.
Alright, alright, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, we're sorry, sorry for your troubles.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker is not here.
He's gonna get a letter.
Alright. City government bid.
So I want to get them out of the way.
Yes.
Alright, we gonna move forward to airport.
Morning, Mr. President, Supervisors. Um, I'm here speaking on a match with the station, I know I have commissioners here. Um, we are actually coming to look at an amendment to our budget, this, I think this is the first time we've asked for this since I've been here. Um, what we have is, we have an FAA inspection that costs us a whole lot of money this year from repainting the secondary runway to ordering new fire suits to everything. So it hit our budget pretty hard doing that, and we received an eight hundred and eighty thousand dollar federal grant that we are entitled to have to pay five percent of, and that's what we're asking for, and are coming to see if we can get an increase. So I don't know if John left, but John had the form that we were requesting, he usually have one. Uh, Deontay has one that, that we had the request that I talked to Brandy about. Um, so five percent of eight hundred and eighty thousand is forty-four thousand is a, we're gonna owe to the federal government for this lighting project out at the airport. Um, that's our match. Um, the, we're asking for fifty thousand, uh, mainly because due to all the expense that we had, we looking to do accounting, uh, with Silas Simmons again instead, and we didn't budget that for this year. So it brought it up to another six thousand dollars that we're gonna owe. So what we are asking for is fifty thousand dollars more to our budget. Um, like I said, this is the first time that I know that we've asked for additional money since I've been here as the airport director. Um, the airport is definitely moving in the right direction, and hopefully in the future, we won't have to ask y'all for anything else. Um, we also, and I just heard him talk about a state conference, um, twenty-third of this month, they're gonna ask me if Adams County wants to host the Airport Managers Association Conference next year. If y'all are doing the fire department, I don't know if y'all want to in the same year, but that's about five hundred and something attendees. Um, that would be wanting to come, but they're gonna ask me if Natchez would host it on the twenty-third. So, um, I'll be happy to answer any of y'all's questions that y'all may have.
And you, you definitely have to talk to, uh, the city about that too, go for, uh, Board of Alderman. Cause, uh, they're actually the ones that benefit the most, just like he was talking about how many people are gonna be here, this is a strange deal. But Adams County doesn't benefit a whole lot as a whole, heads-on-beds tax and all that stuff, everything goes to the city. The county doesn't get a dime of that money. Uh, so, so everybody has, always has, they're asking us for money, and it's like, we don't really get any money from any of those conferences. I don't know why, and Scott won't explain it to me, I've asked him several times, but he's like.
The heads-on, the heads-on beds taxes specifically for what they're asking for, trying to, highest marketing that.
So they need to approach Visit Natchez?
Whatever they're calling at the moment, the.
Yeah, they changed their name pretty great, I know my wife's on that board, and I don't know what she's talking about half the time. Uh, but any, any rate, they have the money for that, and that's certainly you need to.
Well, I don't even think we're asking for money, we're just asking to be a host conference and the conference itself to pay for all of it.
For the city itself, and, and as far as what you ask for, I, I think we'd be crazy not to award that money because we're gonna get a eight, eight hundred and eighty thousand dollar project done, airport improvements.
In design now, so we already have the grant. It should be ready to bid May first, um, and then we'll have it probably June, July, be ready to start construction on it. Um, it is for the taxiway. Now, we did the runway this year, that project's supposed to start March first, I believe, and we did not ask y'all for any of that. We're, we, we were taking care of that five percent on the airports, but this time, when we put the additional money into the airport, we, we're coming up a little bit short for this remainder, so that's why we're asking.
Scott, do I have a question for that?
Uh, yeah, you gotta have one, well, um, you heard the request?
Somebody.
Of the, uh, airport director, it's been prompted to move by, uh, Supervisor Wilson and second by who? Supervisor Gray, uh, to do a match for, uh.
Aren't you asking for twenty thousand?
No, it was forty-four thousand for the match.
Match, and he asked for fifty, so he asked for forty-four thousand dollar match and a six thousand dollar entry.
And other six thousand, excuse me, is for, uh, Silas Simmons.
Silas Simmons.
As already counted for.
They did count for, yeah, just to keep it straight in a minute. Alright, uh, in a discussion, all in favor of vote by using sign a I?
A.
Any opposed, nays have the same right, motion carried, yes. We thank you for your work and, um, continued work and keep up the good work, and, uh, you know, and when you start having those good things, you don't have to come by and see us every month, but once every other month, stop by and see us, we appreciate y'all.
I, I, I struggled to get here this time, but yeah, I made it, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but I will definitely try to keep.
I sent somebody.
Um, well, I had three of them here on four islands.
And Richard, we appreciate you coming in, and we certainly appreciate the board coming in, because they, they're uncompensating, but they're, they're doing a great job out there. I think you got a solid board out there.
Yes, sir.
When you get the money's on?
Um, June, July timeframe. Well, it'll be out to bid May first, and then the contractor has thirty days to, um, uh, get onto the airfield or whatever. So it'll be July. Any other questions?
No, other question, any board members have any other question?
Thank you all.
For your service.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all. Thank you. There's no similar, uh, city government bids. Um, I guess we gonna, we can do a city government bid. Uh, Scott, Morgantown, I do want, I, I wanna bring that update up. Every meeting, that's a question, and always, uh, there, I have questions every day. I mean, that wasn't, I ain't gonna say every day, but every week, if I'm in the public, I get a question about Morgantown Road. So we just, hopefully we can give them some kind of update.
Yes, sir, the phase two is actually gonna be out for bid and looking at a ground break-in mid-June. Uh, George is back there, so if I misspeaking, I hope you will correct me. Um, for phase one, the M-Dot came on, uh, last week, and we, I gave them every laptop I had and paperwork and all that, and they had everything, it was paperless, let me go through it. A lot of the things that they need, um, since the time has run on, on a lot of issues, uh, statute limitations wise, made it easier for them, um, I have sent over a response, getting them to, you know, follow back up with a, with a kind of closeout meeting. Um, and I'm now going to send another response to my guy and say, where are you, I need this, I need the closeout date on the M-Dot then. So on phase two, it's progressing, phase one, we actually have a, did a start date on the project.
Alright, why put you, uh, Mr. Ford, why are you there, you can come on at, uh,
you wanna just do just that Morgantown Road?
You can do Morgantown Road, do Morgantown Road first, and while you're up there, we doing departmental reports, you can go and do your report, but do the Morgantown first.
Well, Morgantown Road, like I said, we, we received comments from M-Dot, how they wanted us to change the plans and the specifications and the proposal documents. And so we're about seventy-five percent complete with those comment. And so what we're doing, we're doing phase one and phase two simultaneously. And so I know we originally had said that we're gonna have a project out to bid close to the end of May. I think we may be able to do it a little bit sooner for phase two. Um, I, I still depends on M-Dot's schedule for phase one, but it seemed a little bit earlier on phase two. Uh, if we can just get through addressing those comments from M-Dot.
And I appreciate it, so, uh, at least hoping somebody online, and, uh, if not, you know, we got an answer for them. That's what they wanna know, attended the starting date, and, uh, hopefully we can get it, uh, out, and they'll, they'll have attended starting date, and we can stay close to the schedule. But now, while you're up there, uh, Supervisor Gray, you had any comment about?
No, seven minutes, President.
Alright, well, can, you can go and do your departmental report while you're there.
I know, um, I got an email from just over about Burke Road, so our archaeology is looking over that permit application. Um, he did the permit in regards to M-D-A-H's requirement, didn't know he would have to do it for the same for wildlife and fishery.
Yeah.
So he's gonna go back out and, you know, do a, a greater area of, uh, exploration, of exploration, okay?
If you should be a quick response on the email forwarded to Sky, to let her know that we're doing on that. Thanks, George, I appreciate it.
Alright, uh, EWP Group Four, the contractor is planning on being complete with a plungable item this week. Um, they're doing an previous board meeting, we asked if they, pay application number five be approved. And then that pay application number six was for their retention for the project, and it was being, it was approved, continuing on completing the plungable item. So I'm standing before you, letting you know that they haven't completed it yet, so, uh, we will send an email to Ms. Dean when this is completed. And so pay application is five, five is fine to six, we're gonna hold on until they complete the plungable item. Um, but also with that, we're. For pay application number five would be for twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. And that's for work associated with pay application number five. And then pay application numbers, our invoice number six would be for two thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. And that can be held until they complete their puncher's item, invoice number six.
On group four, I just, some of the process items, some of the items that were added after we went and done the inspection for the substantial completion.
That's why I said, invoice number five include that information, I'm talking about the retained.
All right, you want, you asked to approve, but they're a pay or invoice with a group five, I mean.
In, in.
Invoice.
So there are two invoices, invoice number five is for twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. So that's just for the engineering work associated with the work that was performed for their pay application number five. And then number six is for the retainage, which is two thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents.
All right, you ready to quick to the engineer, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, it's been properly settled by Supervisor Gray, in a discussion. There be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a I. In a opposed, nays have the same right.
All right, the rest of it is pretty much updates. The striking on the project is close to bid opening, it's the March twentieth board meeting at ten o'clock. So they advertised, we did go out and then we'll also be sending our advertisement to the contractors that we know do striking, striking with. The River Terminal vote round, we was gonna provide that estimate today. We have the number, we're just gonna put it in the form of a, send it to you breaking down for you to ask. And then EWT, EWP for Magnolia Bluff two and three and Lincoln Heights. We'll be submitting a platinum league description to Mr. Scott by Monday to get the try with the easement for those projects. We did have a meeting with, on Magnolia Bluff site number two and it has increased in size significantly. So we will be requesting a cost increase for that from NRCS. If that's, if they pleaded the board to allow us to submit a cost increase for that, that site. Do you have any amount or? Or what? Yeah, so I think right now, it won't, it will not exceed seven and five thousand dollars for increase for that one site. And also, that seven and five thousand will include today's prices for the other two sites, although unit prices may not be the same as they were when they originally gave estimate for those projects. For Magnolia Bluff, the one that we, that we looked at last time. And then like I said, the unit prices for the others, other two, I'm not sure if they are in line with today's prices. I wanna make sure I get on.
Yeah, do you need a motion to increase just to mention some of the board, we need a, we gonna need a motion to just leave them informed. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Nelson to give, and properly settled by Supervisor Wilson to allow I-Listed a pass or increase to the project.
EWP, it includes Magnolia Bluff?
Magnolia Bluff.
Two and three?
Two and three.
And the heights?
And the heights. You gonna get everything in motion?
And what I do is, Ms. Page, I just send you this.
In discussion. All in favor, vote by using sign of a I. In a opposed, nays have the same right, motion carried, yes.
And the last thing, the MCWI grant we submit for Deerfield Road, got a comment back saying that the professional fees exceeded their allotment. So they asked us, would the, would the board have a problem with amending their contribution of two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents for that grant?
You heard, you heard, you heard the engineer, it's been motion made by Supervisor Hutchins?
Sure.
And then properly settled by Supervisor Wilson to amend the, for two hundred and how much?
Sixty-eight dollars.
Two hundred?
Sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents.
Seventy-two cent. In discussion. There be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a I. In a opposed, nays have the same right, motion carried, yes.
Are there any question for me, I don't think?
Any question for the board?
When we was in Washington, Transportation Committee was talking about a whole lot of money that they gave out. So could you look into this safe street and road, uh, rent program?
Of course. Is it safe streets and roads, is it safe routes?
Safe streets and roads for all rent program and fees, do we qualify for any of that? Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, any other question? Yes, Supervisor.
I guess this proposition.
He can talk about it, but I don't wanna talk about the reason you did that.
Well, I just wanted to, I did notice some roads in District One and I know there's some, there were one of y'all's districts that it was on this state aid inspection. Said there were a lot of roads that needed some striking. Some of these roads I'm looking at in my district, I know are included in the paving project that's going on now, which will be done after the paving project. But there are roads in here that are not included in the paving project and if we can figure out what's in our state aid funds and try to go ahead and start putting another bid out to, to cover some of these roads.
So right now, you, right now you have about one point two, but of course, another nine hundred and, so we'll go in once. Just, once they count one state aid, it's that fifty-three hundred dollars back for the fees that they have expended on Morgantown Road. That will increase that by about nine hundred and so, thousand dollars. So you have a little over two million dollars to spend in state aid funds.
I did have, I have to tell you all, I had a conversation with the engineer last week, somewhere we needed to pay this money to get our, pay the five thousands to get our nine hundred thousand back. So I had a follow-up conversation with him last week and made sure we got the right paperwork to Scott, so we can get that submitted. So we will be getting an extra nine hundred thousand back and that was gonna be a part of my report. And I think it was recommended that we need to spend at least three million dollars of that money and I was gonna bring that up in my report. But I think all areas have some things, I got some things on there and I was gonna bring something up, hoping, about the airport. Because, you know, looks where we, looks like we will have an air fight by the end of this year. And I wanna be fair with everybody, do everything, so we can all get something done in our community, so we might not get just the pavement. Cause I know, I did check with the pavement, do state aid roads, they're three hundred and six.
Seventy-five.
Three hundred, they go to three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a mile. So we probably can add some striking to those area roads out there, but in that way, it won't take up a lot. We did striking, it's not as expensive as the pavement. All right, but we'll, we'll probably, we'll do a sound out of the board and hopefully we can get some other list, uh, roads and stuff together out of the board and we'll get something submitted to you probably by next meeting. If that's fine with the board.
Yeah, we're just saying you go.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna bring it up in my report.
On the bridge on Burke Road, I mean, you said y'all were gonna study, you know, I discussed with three different people to try and get bids on that temporary bridge to put in. If you come up with anything on the upstream side that you say that's what we need to originally put the, or we talked about originally to put that bridge. With that creek coming into it, or that branch coming into it, we need to figure out what direction we're going, what we won't be waiting on.
We can, we can read again about that, but the problem, the thing is, the original, the platinum league description and easement that Scott is trying to get now was based on personally. So I'm not sure how much of the lay, if I change the location upstream or downstream or upstream. Different from where we initially talked about. So I can really look at it and see if that have any impact on the schedule.
You can go back over if you want to do it, see.
I mean, I just asked, I've discussed with Supervisor Nelson and Supervisor that area that, you know, the way it looks, the three people that I've met, we have discussed downstream, but we have discussed upstream. But now that that branch, it'll be, I don't know how we gonna, how that water from Washington approach out, once we put it in, get on the internet.
If you wanna put it, if you wanna put it downstream, I need to know, we need to go ahead and handle meeting, cause I need to know exactly where we wanna put it at. So I can get my survey to come and change the platinum league description and what we're gonna do there. And that may also have an impact on our drawing, and it may have an impact on our drawing as well.
We need to look at what we can and see what we can do, cause now it's about what the bridge is coming and, you know, what we're doing to get up. Hang on, I have to go out there.
All right, any other question, yeah?
I don't have a question, but I, I don't even wanna bring this back up when it comes to my report about Morgantown Road. I contacted the road manager and everybody know we have no accident out there. And I understand we're gonna get the road and all that done over with drainage and curbing done or whatever the case may be. That area needs serious lighting, those lights out there on Morgantown Road, look like they been out there. I don't know how old Adams County is, but it looks like they been out there since then, cause they're, they're not those bright lights. They got those, those old dim lights and I think if they change the lights and put bright lights out there, it'll make a big difference out there.
I think if, if I'm not mistaken, this Scott corrected me if I'm wrong, we need to get with engineering, cause engineering does part of Morgantown and Southwest does the other side of. And I do know Southwest, when they change them out, they don't put those lights up anymore. They put up LEDs now, so I think, I don't know where we need to go, but I think we need, this is a question for us to move forward with power companies.
You did mention the drainage and also dividing the road too, certainly it's, you, you walk on that road like you and I did the other day, if you're right up on the road, it's easy to upset. Dividing, having a bigger shoulders, it's certainly gonna go up too, but light can prove it.
All right, well, that being out, we appreciate your time.
While, while we're, for, for, to make sure that application number five for group four was on the dock.
Scott, can you check it out?
He just gave me the invoices, so.
Those invoices were our invoices, I submitted those invoices. Envoices I submitted last time, you asked me to do hard copy, so I did that last time.
You submitted last time?
Yes, I submitted five and six for concrete the last time and both of them was, the, the number six is continuing to complete the puncher's item.
Correct. Yeah. All right, well, we'll be checking to get your answer on this, as you wanna move forward, we, we gonna hold up right there. But you can have submitted paperwork.
I have.
All right, well, we'll, we'll, we'll be taking it, all right, next departmental report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Scotty Martin, I'm the control for Adams County Board Supervisor. Um, the first thing I would like to get approved is permission to advertise for road department six month supplies.
You heard the request of the, um, control, that first question. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Nelson and properly settled by Supervisor Gray for advertising for the road department six months. Uh, Nelson and Supervisor Gray settled. Uh, in a discussion, are ready to vote, all in favor, vote by using sign of a I. In a opposed, nays have the same right, motion carried, yes, okay?
Um, I also have two votes, one is from Dunn's Construction, one's from Miles Construction for Broadmore, Park Center, the concession stand, bathrooms, press box dug out for both. And Miles Construction is thirty thousand, six seventy-five and Dunn's Construction is thirty-four thousand, ninety dollars. Now, with, with Miles being it, I don't know how we would move forward, how we would do it. He's already received two of the jobs that we were advertising for, for, for the parks. So I don't know if he would have the time, so I don't, you know.
I was gonna bring that up, yeah. Well, all right, wait, I talked to Scott and I talked to, and I have been in contact with Dunn. And we do want, well, as a matter of fact, they had a, at the construction center, it was booked, they had a rodeo out there this week. And so I would love to see if I always you, laws, the laws have always best, because if you can't get to it before the middle of the year, then there's something. So on Broadmore, I'm gonna make a motion that we move with Dunn Construction. And I'm also gonna give it to Dunn and see if he can get started, cause if you can't, if he can't get started until mid-June or something like that on the other thing. And I, I think he said he'll try to get started this week, cause I think we was in Providence, we had did the roof and we still had to do the undercarriage, big boards on there.
Yeah, he put the shingles on.
Yeah, and had that replacement of the shingles, so I wanted to have a contract, but we needed to move forward, you know, we can't be in down in June or July during construction. So I, I'm gonna make a motion on Broadmore to move forward with Mr. Dunn. And so I'll bring it, the next two weeks, we'll bring it back if he's not started on the other. So can I get a second? It's been properly moved by me and settled by Supervisor Gray to move with the Broadmore Construction with Dunn Construction, in a discussion.
Yeah, in next question, you say Miles, are he doing somehow other?
He did, he's doing, he's doing, he's finishing progress in, and he, he also had the complete construction of the.
Rodeo arena.
The rodeo arena doing the press box, bathroom, entrance. All right, in a discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a I. In a opposed, nays have the same right, all right, move.
We also have two posts, even though they're under five thousand, for all electric, for the lighting, for the, for being in Broadmore. All electric, the amount is thirty-eight hundred and equally electric, the amount is thirty-nine hundred.
Well, I don't think we need a, other five thousand. We got, you got two posts, you gonna have to get a, a bunch of them.
And that's all I have.
All right, and we appreciate.
This Martin, Martin up there, Johnny talked to you about the lights on the pavilion, the road.
Well, he mentioned it, but I was gonna make you put up.
Where are we with the equipment on recreation?
We, I've ordered, I'm waiting to get information back from Mr. Bailey as far as the structures are concerned. He's doing the structures, his company, Great Southern Recreation, is doing the structures. He's gonna give me a date once the manufacturer lists him, no, because all of the structures aren't custom. So we're, we're waiting to get a call back from him and then I'll give him a bid to set up a date for installation. But all the other, all the other equipment is here, we just have to get it in. The swings and all of that stuff are, are in already.
So that's gonna go?
Yes, they are in.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Departmental reports next.
Good morning.
All right.
Two weeks ago, I came in and spoke about Magnolia, Magnolia Frack, that was Mr. Blaine's company. I did the checking, then I met with Mr. Blaine, we went through the list again and it is double assessed. APAC has paid their bill, it's APAC, I moved everything up to APAC. And they've already paid their bill, so this bill was actually double assessed. So I asked for it to be removed from the, so.
You heard the request of Ms. Haley, which has been properly moved by Supervisor Nelson, it's been properly settled by Supervisor Wilson, in a discussion. There be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a I. In a opposed, nays have the same right.
Ricky, were you on that?
Uh, White House Baptist Church. It says that the exemption was taken off and it was added to the road for twenty-twenty. And they're asking for it to be removed. And I believe they told me it went to the land sale, I'm not real sure. And I'll, I'll check, but.
Yes, cause I have a lot of dollars.
Okay.
It's down in my office now.
Okay, and it was for two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and we're asking for. Okay, and it was for two-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. And we're asking for, um I guess the reimbursement for the sale or something?
Well, then taxes, because the twenty-twenty taxes are due.
Oh, so it didn't sell.
What year now?
Twenty-twenty.
The twenty-twenty taxes are due on this property.
Oh, so it didn't go to the sale.
Somehow the um exemption code that is.
Yeah, because I'm a payman. I just left.
She's supposed to do a bill.
We can take a court order if we can assess after a certain period of time.
Okay.
Shouldn't have information, remind me about it.
I give it to you.
I need the resolution authorizing the board to seek the court order on that.
All right, you heard the uh request of the attorney. Uh he need the uh permission to request a court on that. Uh can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Nelson. It's been properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Are there any discussion?
What was the name of the church?
Uh that house.
Lighthouse?
That house. Any more discussion? All in favor, vote by you. You can sign an eye. Any opposed, may they have the same right. Motion carry now. All right.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Uh hold on. Is Fred, seen Fred Pump?
He was, he was back in the.
All right, well, we're gonna move on. Next departmental report. Who's next?
Well, I would like you one on one.
Huh?
I wonder what they're gonna do by the whole.
Oh, okay, well, that's gonna be tough. Come again, hold on a bit. Uh we, yes. The next, uh.
Good morning, board. How's everybody?
All right.
It's great. Uh I got a couple of things. Uh I'm ready to go to the station. I have a safe place, our reception center exercise. It's gonna be tomorrow uh from sixteen-thirty to nineteen-thirty. Uh that's part of, that's part of our annual certification with the state of Mississippi. Uh we actually, Supervisors, you're going to just come by and see what we do, come to the power wash. It ain't no power washing. Let me put it out there. You gonna get your vehicle washed, you just, it's the end of the place, but show how we are part of the state plan that we do for any evacuees from Clayville County or during any incident at the Grand Gorge Newton Station. Uh we do have, uh we have some county boards that's helping us out to participate with the good, uh because we have to provide our own victims and stuff to get certified through FALM on that. So just come out tomorrow and uh I'll be on the grill, so we'll have good food after we.
What time you saying? Look, what time you saying?
Yeah.
Wait, wait.
It's gonna be at the same room.
Same room.
Yep.
Time?
Uh well, it goes kickoff probably about five, five-thirty when everything kicks off, so. Also, I want to request travel for Connie Mason. She's going to attend the GIS method class in her Mississippi, uh March the first and second.
All right, I do have the paperwork in my hand. Can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins. Can I get a second? It's been properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. In a discussion, all in favor, vote by you. You can sign an eye. Any opposed, may they have the same right. Motion carry.
Okay, uh the last item, uh y'all know my administrator decision, she did complete the National Emergency Management Basic Academy. She did graduate from that. Uh that was part of one of her deals we did last year, uh as far as being compensated for that. Uh you all know she did during COVID, she got the counter back in a, in excess of three-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars during the COVID deficit on that. And I did send a request through Scott and Brandy on that. We did put in a budget item for her pay raise increase. Uh with that, mo- most part of our salaries is reimbursed from the state because we're part of the Emergency Management Personal Brand. When we do exercise, the state pays that money back to the county. Uh so I did ask for a three-thousand-five-hundred dollars increase. That's with fringes and everything. I did send the paperwork to Scott and Brandon. I don't know if you got it.
And you did say we're being reimbursed?
Yeah, we do get reimbursed. All our salaries is reimbursed because that's part of our grant program. So the county, you know, our salaries, it pays the majority of our salaries. So it wouldn't really hurt the budget.
It's actually a little bit more for the cover of fringe, but.
Yeah.
Which employee?
Oh, Bree.
Oh, Bree, but.
I don't have the paperwork.
No, they did. I gave you, yeah.
He did the budget request forms, we approved the budget amendment, then we can get the paperwork in, get that, then we start.
Yeah. Because we, that's, that's, we had to go through that process first.
Get that, agree to increase the budget, and then would you go ahead and prove to pay the increase.
Like you say, it's already in the budget.
Yeah, we had the money just be moved. We already had the money. Yeah, just need to move the mon- yeah.
Get the change line out.
Yeah, line out for that increase.
Brad, you requesting the change, huh?
Yeah, it's, it's on that sheet, so the budget.
Do we need a motion to do it?
We'll do it.
I got, all right, well, check your motion to change the uh the line out. It's been properly moved by Supervisor uh Wilson and properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins. In a discussion, yes.
Mr. President, so Brad, what you saying is you uh anticipating her going and doing whatever she had to do and you put it in the budget, just gonna move it from one line up to another.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, in, all in favor, vote by you. You can sign an eye. Eye, any opposed, may they have the same right. Uh motion carry now, next.
But that's it. We still wait, we, we anticipating getting that uh that sign refixed in COVID that in this month. We still waiting on our safety equipment here. It's slow, but we're gonna get that taken care of. That's all I have. Any questions?
All right, one question for you. Thank you, Brad.
Brad for action.
All right. All right, uh departmental report, next.
Morning, Mr. President. The board member, the head of the Adams County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Travis Patton. Asking the uh board to approve um three new hires uh for the sheriff's office. Uh one is uh Quay Sean uh Denard for the uh sheriff uh for Patrol Division, Deputy Sheriff. The other is Michael Crazy uh for the Patrol Division.
He's already been approved.
Okay.
We get him.
Okay, and Jamila Newborn for the jail.
We did that one too. Yeah, we did that one too.
There's two.
Yeah, I remember.
You're right.
Y'all have those already?
Uh we got all of them too.
No, we got one. The first one.
Denard, Quay Sean Denard.
You got the paperwork?
Got the paperwork.
What's the seven?
Seventeen ninety-one, thirty-seven, two sixty, uh two fifty-two eighty. I get it. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Gray. Now, in a discussion.
In a discussion, uh he would, uh I'm asking a question to make sure that it is in the budget.
Yes, sir, it's, it's in our budget.
You say this is a new hire?
Yes, sir, he's uh, I think previously worked at the Nats Police Department, so he's coming with us.
Could I just uh get a friend or a member to your budget pending, pending county administrator, make sure that it's in the budget?
Sir.
Thank you, sir.
You heard the amendment? All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor, vote by you. You can sign an eye. Any opposed, may they have the same right. Motion carry. All right.
That's all we have.
That's all you have?
That's all we got.
Oh, man.
Like these.
Anything?
Thank y'all. Yeah, oh no.
Sit down.
Hey, thank y'all.
Oh, you, you gotta stay. You gotta get somebody else over here.
You gotta stay.
That's right, that's right. I gotta stay, that's right, that's right.
You bring somebody else over here.
No, I ain't no job for a while. I think there's something to ask for, right?
Good morning, boys.
Good morning.
And then with Adams E nine-one one dispatch, I want to give the course for uh February the first to today on the cause. Adams County SO has three thirty-five, National PDF eight oh six, the fire department has twenty-five with ten being in the camera. Also, I want a request from the board if we could set up a meeting with the city so we can move forward on trying to get us a bill.
Where are, who's on that committee?
I.
I'm just calling y'all out just because I can, because I knew I would.
Well, um I mean, is this okay? Where is Mr. Brad from? Did he leave?
Yeah, he's calling up there too.
Okay.
We got, uh, well, uh, Su- uh Supervisor Nelson and Supervisor Hutchins. Uh well, I guess the board will give y'all permission to set up a, uh get in contact and set up that uh and start a conversation.
You have to give us some city.
Yeah, give us some city official.
I was under the impression of the last meeting that we had, that y'all were willing to stay where you were from time being because Brad was gonna apply for grants trying to get the building built. Is that not, that's, that's what I thought.
Yes, um we, we have another meeting with the advisory board as well and with the chief of police and they're all voted to move on with our, with our home facility and with the terms that they were saying that billing the new building was gonna take a long time.
Also, they made a, yeah, and also they made a suggestion, and that's why y'all said y'all want to stay where you all are, that you all go upstairs over there in their building. I think it was open the um the city.
Both council chambers.
Chamber that you all be housed upstairs, but you all said you all around the.
No, they um, they suggested that if Brad and them to have anywhere to go, that they could be housed.
Well, I think what we need to do, I'm, I'm, as the president, I'm gonna make a motion. I mean, I mean, I'm not gonna make a motion, but what I'm gonna request is Brad and everybody be here before we start making, we, I mean, me as a president, I'm not gonna make any decisions until we get everybody at the table. I'm not gonna make a decision without Brad and everybody here. Uh I think we need to bring the advisory board or whatever, and we need to sit down, even if we need to sit down and take a session, because you know what I'm saying, we need to have everybody on the same page.
That's first, first you need to meet, need to now on the committee.
That's right.
Yes, to meet.
That's what I said.
And then bring it back.
And bring, so we can have a recommendation with everybody at the table.
That's, that's fine with me.
Okay, do you have a?
Do y'all have any more questions?
Yeah.
What's the name of them?
Uh Jan and Chad.
They supposed to already sign off on that.
They might have been already signed. They just left them up.
Yeah, that's fine. You signed it being Brad been off.
Yeah, I said. All right, thanks, Mr. President. All right, next departmental report.
Last time coming at that last one, what do you have or last time?
Sergeant, I think he's signature on a couple of them.
I think one of them had a bit.
All right. All right, uh, Robert Lowell Paul.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Uh call last week, uh y'all know that uh we've had several accidents on Kingston Road. Uh so I called last week to the MDOT, talking to Mr. Stewart about the same sign project that we've got done on Morgan Town Road and on Liberty Road. Mr. Stewart come to Nats yesterday on his day off and I met him and uh he wrote Kingston Road, says it would be a good candidate for this project. Um so I'm just asking the board, once it comes forward, I can go ahead and sign to do it. It don't cost the county anything. They stake out where the signs go, they provide all the signs. We just have to put them up in about a two-week period once they're delivered to Nats. So I'm asking the board to give me permission to.
You heard the request of the road manager? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson and properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins. In a discussion.
Yeah, I have a discussion. Bobby, let me ask you this question too. In the process of that, can you also look at uh North Palestine? Because you know, we have quite a few accidents.
We have, I was gonna finish this project and move next to that one because we have, we had three weeks and we have three months uh on, on Palestine. So uh that was my next road, but I was gonna get this one finished and then request that. Um, okay.
Clear, miss. Uh the state coming in to look at where the place is signed, right?
Correct, the state.
No, we just, we just getting the motion clear, so it'll be missed.
The state comes in and puts markers where they go, and then we.
Sends the signs.
And then they send the signs to county.
We put on, we pay nothing other than labor to put them on.
No cost.
No cost.
What kind of signs?
Stop signs, stop signs, curb signs, anything that's ever on, whatever signs.
Basically what we was doing, trying to make sure we have a clear motion. All right?
All right, the next thing I have.
Matt Carey. Any more discussion? All in favor, vote by you. You can sign an eye. Any opposed, may they have the same right. Motion carry. All right, done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next thing I have, um I got two request forms in front of President Gaines there. I will be off March the ninth and March the twentieth. Uh let's have some tests run.
I do have.
The ninth through the twentieth?
No, just single days.
And the twentieth?
Yes.
He has uh requests to be off the ninth, come March into twentieth of March. Uh can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins.
Did you say?
It's been properly seconded by Supervisor Gray to uh approve uh the road managers of two off days, which will be March the first and March the twentieth.
March the ninth.
March ninth. All right, in a discussion. Can I get a motion? I mean, all in favor, vote by you. You can sign an eye. Any opposed, may they have the same right. All right?
Thank you. Um next thing I have, Joseph Benson, um turned in his letter of resignation to the county. His last day will be February the twenty-second, which will be tomorrow.
I do have it. Um need a motion to accept his resignation.
Authorize advertisement?
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins and properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson to accept the resignation of Joseph Benson.
And authorize advertising?
Uh the road department and authorize advertising for a position.
What position did he?
Ma'am.
What position did he?
He was uh laborer.
All right, in a discussion. All in favor, vote by you. You can sign an eye. Any opposed, may they have the same right. Motion carry.
Thank you. Have a spore dirt request at one seventy-nine Morgan Town Road, Ms. Smith.
I do have it in my hand. Um uh spore dirt request for Ms. Monica Smith. Can I get a motion? It's been uh properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. Uh in a discussion, all in favor, vote by you. You can sign an eye. Any opposed, may they have the same right. Motion carry.
Thank you. Uh next thing I have, uh it's time for the uh winter, well, not winter spraying, we're coming out of winter to do the first spraying. They do it in March, and then they'll come back in July, but the first spraying will be in March. The cost is thirteen-seven, twenty. The cost did not go up this year, but the same as it was last year. So they have spray in March. Uh next thing I have is um Sparrow Lane. Mr. Gray called me several months ago, a couple of months back, and um Sparrow Circle was accepted uh in two thousand back when the county accepted a lot of roads and put them, you know, public roads, took them from private, put them on road registry. Um Sparrow Lane is a little lane off of Sparrow Circle. We couldn't find anything. Mr. Alice didn't have anything. Um we kept calling around, calling, trying to find, and Paige finally dug up some stuff from two thousand and four. Um it was a motion made.
You didn't take on any private roads when you were adopting roads that were public, that's all that the road registry did.
Well, just saying what they took on in two thousand, but Paige found this in May the third, two thousand and four. Curly Jones, Assistant Road Manager, requested that Sparrow Lane become part of the county road system upon a motion. Uh Mike Felker, seconded by Derek Rennell, and it would now be carried by the board in two thousand. And it was unanimously carried by the board in two thousand four.
So it hasn't been worked since then?
No.
Did it what, has it been worked since then?
It, it has not, well, what brought the question of, we brought a guy back part-time and was working a road and that went off of it. Somebody asked him and he, and he worked it and we hit a water line, so that brought a big concern to the county. So that's when we started trying to figure out what took place, and this is what we come up with. So.
Yes, President.
Yes, sir, Supervisor Gray.
The lady that live at the end of that road, had contacted me and I told her I was gonna check into it. In the process of checking into it, we couldn't find no information whether it was a county road. And little Mr. Fuller looking into it, I guess Paige found, uh, in the minutes where it was a motion made to accept it as a county road. So I guess my say.
Well, it's in the minutes, so, you know, we, the board speaks through our minutes. So we can move forward with this.
Minutes from two thousand four, and we've been working it since then?
It has not been working.
It's not.
So, um, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm trying to explain what you need to say.
Well, you're only, it was supposed to come from the minutes to the county, this isn't anyone that's been here, it's supposed to go to the minutes to the county road registry, and then they work off of the county road registry. And it was on the county road registry or not?
We took fine on the road registry.
If they went a period of time, there might be abandonment issues if they went a period of time without us regularly maintaining it. So what, we need to look into it and make sure we can add, if it's been maintained like it, like it is, then we can add it, no problem. If it hasn't been maintained for a period of ten years, you can run into abandonment.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yeah.
From what a previous homeowner out there told me, when Curly was in office, he was doing it. Since Curly been gone, it haven't been no maintaining of that road.
And her, how long been on it?
Uh, see, it's been over ten years, but, but like I said, that's what happened, I mean, he's speaking right, I'm sure the person that was grading it has retired and then, you know, Curly's retired and it moved on and just, we couldn't find anything, we'd get a call on it, I mean, I'm gonna tell you, it's just like the same decree deal we're going through, I, I mean.
So do we need to, it's been approved, so do this board, what do this board need to do to be safe, to work?
We'll have it. I mean, it should've been added to the county road registry, we should've done it, so let's, I'll get with Robbie, let's have something from the board. Either we'll just be able to add it on, because we can add it on, or we'll just more accept it since it was privately accepted. Got to be a variance in that, but it ought to have been added, never was, but let's make sure we do it right.
Yes.
That's the.
The other thing I'm saying, the lady at the end of the road kept telling me that the county used to maintain these roads. Then all of a sudden they stopped.
Right, and if you stop for a period of ten years, that, that can create some abandonment issues, and they're supposed to stop because they were, what, they're supposed to only work with on the county road registry.
Okay. Uh, we need to make sure we get it caressed.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you, move forward, Robbie.
Thank y'all. Um, Garden City, which, the guy wasn't here, had that on my list and the roads are there. Um, okay, now we get to something interesting. Ten Rattlers and sixteen South View. I went yesterday and took more pictures as I do before these meetings. Um, no change. Uh, sixteen South View, it has been some change, he bringing more in. Uh, so, with that being said, I'm gonna bring these pictures up to y'all unless y'all look at me and give me.
Yes, sir.
I don't even see no more pictures.
I don't either.
We, we already said what we gonna do, and we need to do it.
Yep, I don't need, I don't need.
Cause I don't even see no more pictures.
Um, that what I need, I need to move forward, Rattler and the south.
Both of, both of the same issue.
I don't need to see no more pictures.
Both of the same issue.
We don't need to see no more pictures, we need to move forward.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
For Rattler, we stuck a sign out in front, we had previously adjudicated, they have seven days notice, the road crew can, can exercise and start cleaning it up. Or wherever, South Wind, state has given us permission, and we have an adjudication set for the first march on what he's claiming is private. Actually, there's one that's not state, so we'll have that adjudication on that one. For the, for the state portion of the property, we have permission to go ahead and do it and request reimbursement from the state. It's out of abundance of caution when we get adjudicated on, on March, and then we're good to go.
Rattler, we move forward.
Alright, uh, with that being said, though, President Gaines.
Yes, sir.
All the vehicles and things in that yard. When we grab to them and pull them out there and start loading them and doing it, if we don't have any records served, we don't have anything, we're gonna be liable for the damage to property or whatever. I mean, I, all I, all you gotta do is tell me to go get them, and we basically gonna start getting them with something, I don't know with what, but.
Let me ask you this question, where are you gonna put them?
I, what I say, where are we going, what we going, last time on, on South View, we, we called records. Remember Sheriff Paul come out there and it was all in the road that he, with trash truck couldn't turn around, anything turn around. So they called tow truck, tow truck come out there and, and I think it was four maybe, they pulled out. This guy here on Rattler has probably got fifteen plus. I, I guess, you know, I count them, but they everywhere. Uh, you know, the tires and things like that, we start doing, you know what I'm saying, but we can't get to that till we get all these vehicles out the way. So that's the directions I need to know or some help that I need of what we gonna do, are we gonna call tow service, I care the sheriff out there with me? And, 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 or whatever, I mean, you have to tell me what grounds I at, I mean, I'm ready to move forward.
Well.
Where are we going?
Well, well.
That's what I'm asking, where are we gonna put them?
Who we taking to the Pac-Man or?
Saint Joel?
I don't think we can take it.
That works, that's a good one. We gotta give it, we gotta tell them where we gonna put them. Move them two or three times a week.
Well, we gonna move, but we need to start cleaning up this number one, the tires gonna move to the side, we gotta, we gotta make some effort because, I mean, he been before the board, I think, three times, he been here. He already said he was gonna move forward with them, we have been lenient and gave him the opportunity, and from my understanding, and I didn't need to see the pictures more, and still cleaning up, he started cleaning up and took some tires to the dump, now he's starting to reaccumulate. So we got, we got to move forward with something, uh, I'm, I'm gonna suggest that they try to do some legal work and see what can we do with them, uh, where, where would they go with them, and, uh, then we'll move forward cleaning up.
Alright, if it's a menace, we, it's garbage, but it's not a menace.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you don't know what's good or bad, I mean, they're, they're, apparently they're not running, because he's not, they're not moving them, I mean, he's having to tow them and move them and drag them to this spot, to that spot, I mean, that's all he's doing, is moving it around there, but.
And he had to, I can put the fence up, he had to start.
He does have a string pull across there, as of yesterday, he's got a string pull across, like he might be gonna start, but I, that's, that's been a long time going.
Well, we gonna, we gonna.
It'll take long to put a fence up.
I think we start moving, once we start moving, he probably will move forward.
Yeah.
Alright.
You can block the string, it's progress.
Alright, we, we'll get with the turn, we'll get with you, uh, in the next couple of days, yeah.
Okay, um, next thing I have is, um, some state aid, uh, I mean, not state aid, the EWP's. Um, I sent Camo, um, an email the other day on some that their ear was running out on, on Johnson Circle and on, uh, sixteen Pine View. They went to sixteen Pine View, done a little bit there, uh, Johnson Circle hadn't been, they hadn't done it yet. Uh, I know Mike told me they had moved to Lansdowne to reset another pile and put some more boards in to hold some dirt on that, which was on the punch list, but I guess, uh, him and IMS discussed what would take place and what it would take to hold that, so they did that. Um, South Palestine, they went out, welded a piece in the bottom, put some stuff around it. Um, I need to get with the contractor, that's not holding. Uh, I went back in it yesterday and took some pictures of it again yesterday, uh, all the packing of material they put in's come out from the rain, it's down in the stream bed. I took pictures of welded pieces still in the bottom, um, so they have to correct that. But I just want to update the board, y'all asked for updates on the EWP's, so I'll give them to y'all on those. Uh, but I guess Johnson Circle they go, and it, uh, took care of, it's two washers on top of the pipe and going down into the hole there. Um, I do know eighty-four, number two, we're eighty-four, three. They've got some pretty good washers in it, but Hayden not here, I don't know when he's gonna show back up, you know, for the meeting to discuss this, but they've got some serious issues out there that he's got to look at.
Yes, sir. Supervisor.
President, also, you know, Robbie, we was out, um, Deerfield, uh, that bridge last week.
Correct.
And it has a lot of washes, and we were thinking at the pipes that they had out there to use, and our suggestion was that those pipes that they're getting ready to use is not gonna hold.
That's correct, and that's another contractor, that's not Camo, that's gonna be holding, that's J.K.S. too, so.
Right.
I'm waiting on something from them, I don't know why, but it needs something addressed, that project's gonna get wor, a lot worse too.
That's right.
If the engineer don't get involved, and we've sent pictures and we've seen, and I think Mr. Grandpa has tried to get a hold to him. Had you, Mike, on some occasions for some punch list items or some stuff you needed to get with him on, is that correct? Or what are you waiting on J.K.S. for?
Oh, um, well, first off, on group four, w- we, we still do not even have a signed contract from them, a copy of it. I'm, I'm sorry, group two, I'm sorry, group two, we, we still don't have a signed copy of the contract from them. I'm assuming it's signed, I hope it's signed, cause we done done the work, and I done paid for most of the work. Um, also, on December the eighth, we all went, Robbie, um, myself, um, Mike Green, Hayden, Meg, we're out, we're all went and looked over the sites, come up with a punch list, and we also had, we, we had requested a, uh, substantial completion, which triggered the inspection. And the preliminary inspection, so we, we, and we've, we've worked on some of that, then it's raining again, and then it's washed again, and we're gonna have to address that, that's not an issue, and we're gonna get to it. Um, uh, but he's, you know, he, he sent us, we met on December the eighth, he sent us the punch, but it's on December the twenty second. Well, that's Friday, Christmas and whatnot, and, and then it's been raining and everything else, now it's all of a sudden, you know, we get a little frost out here, we're trying to take care of things. Uh, but we still haven't received a letter of substantial completion from them. Nor have we ever received one from them in the past on any other jobs that we've ever worked with the county of. That they've been involved with, we've never received a letter of substantial completion. Um, and that's very important, and it's part of the contract, and what that does is, that sets the date that your warranty starts. Which, me personally, they're not issuing it, and they letting it run, and you're getting, by the time we get all the punch list items done and everything taken care of, and we finally set up the final inspection, just like the lady out there, you know, four, five, six months before all that went down. And so instead of warranting it for a year, we ended up warranting it for a year and a half, basically. But, oh, they need to issue, I mean, that's what they're supposed to do. Oh.
I'll email, I'll email numerous times.
Yeah.
We were probably, it did pop a lot of emails, and I know you probably got them, and I know you'll probably got with Scott. Um, Scott, you had some of the emails that you have, but basically what we gonna have to do is figure out a way to get with, um, Ms. Carter, and, uh, hopefully we'll try to sit down at the table and have, uh.
Well, I don't want it to come, uh, Ms. President, I don't want it to come to when, you know, everything's finished up.
Yeah.
And then we, we're supposed to supply y'all with a guarantee, guaranteed, which we always do, and we warrant it. I don't want it to come up that, when he gets our letter of guarantee, this thing, he said, "Aye".
Yeah, I'm saying, I, I, I totally understand what you're saying, so we heard and, and glad you came, so we heard you as a board, not just one person, we heard you as a board.
Alright.
And so, uh, you have came and made, made the plan, what you want and what's, what's required, you know, it's not anything personal, this is what required. So, uh, Scott tried to set up a meeting and, uh, you can include myself, uh, if the vice president, uh, wanted to include it, if Matt, you know, Supervisor that can be, set up, she had set up a meeting with, uh, myself, the road manager, uh, the engineer and the contractor, and, uh, Mike Green. Is that what you said? Alright?
The only other thing I got, I don't want to sound like a broke record, I just want to check on.
We can check on it right now. We checking on them, man.
Alright.
Watch my outside, eh?
That's all I got, and I hate to bother y'all with that, I really do. Shouldn't have to, not only are you talking about group four, but we're talking about group two, with George and Carter, that's the thing that submitted a, or was supposed to submit a partial paper request for our remainder work, I believe it was the striping, that was all we had left.
I don't know, but I know he wasn't out here last meeting, he wasn't out here, so if he wasn't here, uh, I don't know if it was a hell of a, we had to get with them, he wasn't out the last meeting. Alright, but we, we gonna, we checking all this up, then we gonna take care of it. Alright, Robbie, move forward.
Thank you. Next thing I have is the, uh, key legal dump site grant, you had it before you, uh, President Gaines, uh, nineteen thousand nine sixty-two seventy-one.
Yes, sir, do.
Okay.
You have another one?
They have another one, which is a tire grant, which we just, uh, asking to pull some money, two thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars off of it, is, uh, what we do. Total grant's twenty-five thousand, we use money off of it, we just, uh, asked for our money, and that's what it was, uh, twenty-nine eighty.
Okay, we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
So one of them is, this is a re, one of them is a reimbursement, and I have to sign a reimbursement, and the other one is, uh, so you need to request, uh, you know, this is, uh, this is the application, so you need, uh, so, so she needs with, uh, requesting permission to apply for the grant.
Correct.
Uh, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson and properly settled by Supervisor Gray, any discussion? There have been no discussion, all in favor, vote by you with a sound of "a". Any opposed, nays had a sign, right? Alright, you can move forward.
And you had mentioned state aid funds about wanting to do some striping.
Yes, sir, I did.
And Mr. Wilson, two on Kingston Road, which is a state aid road, and Airport Road is a state aid road.
What, what we just talking about, if we missed, what, what we're gonna do is look and, uh, give everybody the opportunity to look at the state aid list, and we're gonna get together, we will get together by next meeting, or some kind of photo next week, so we can move forward with it. If that's right, then I think that'd be fair to everybody, that way everybody get some other stuff done and they can be on this, just, you know, one or two supervisor.
Had a lot of complaints about Kingston Road, all those wrecks out there, so it's not good, and they didn't have any striping on it.
Yeah, and I want to make sure.
And all the shoulders need to be built up, just like Kingston Road, I mean, I listen to. They should start on that today.
Yeah, and I want to make sure that everybody has enough of that, uh, thing, you know, so it won't seem like one supervisor giving it out, or one supervisor asking. Uh, so we all got constituents, and I keep that in mind, so we all gonna try to serve all our constituents, so give us a good time and we'll get together for mission, sir.
So last thing I have, cats on all. Robbie, I got a question, it might not have anything to do with you, I got a complaint about a fire hydrant that's, uh, got a garbage bag taking across it on Rhodes Hill Drive. Uh, I'm sure that's Adams County, uh, Water Association, but, uh, I don't know that. Well, we did the fire, or Adams County Water Association, not Adams County as a whole. It said, "Rob, more work doing there, they elected not, must not do there anymore" or whatever. Uh, but I, I wrote it down, Rhodes Hill there, um, and, and I've got one more on my list, I seen yesterday, on Liberty Road, back there, second to third, that's one laid over right there. Yeah, I had, uh, God text me and said that, there's a trash rack taken. We do steam melt, so we do do those in the county. We do Steve Meltzer, so we do do those in the county, as a Adams County Water Association. And that's where we make a year of the inspection ride with them too, and check all of those, with the Adams County.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, anything else, Mr.? Doc, anything else?
That's all I have.
Uh, yeah, Supervisor, have any other questions for Mr. Doc? Alright, thank you, Mr. Doc.
I just wanna thank you for looking into that Kingston Road thing, and those that they're concerned throughout the whole community, put aside a thing, and I think it's been official. Of course, there's a lot of other factors that go into all of this, but anything we can do in the county to prevent loss of life, or injury to our residents is important, I thank you for your share.
And I think that's a good program, him Doc's got a lot of people out there, and like I said, we can go on two other roads, and we do it on this one, and like I said, I am gonna ask for one more. And he said he very seldom have to the top of the asshole.
Right, I'm gonna sit there and order that.
Correct. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, Nick?
Al. Alright, I've got pretty good things to go over, uh, I'll be quick with the first one, our home grant, through Mississippi Home Corporation, I had advertised for, uh, legal, for surveyor, and for asbestos inspector, the only proposal I received was for asbestos inspector, so I'm gonna re-advertise for that. And I'll, I thought I'd do a better job soliciting some proposals, that's time.
Yeah, I, I would submit one, but it told me it was gonna be reset for that.
So anyway, we'll table that, I'll re-advertise, and maybe in the next couple of meetings, we'll have some proposals to open for that, and we'll see. The next thing I wanna mention, uh, Wes made me aware of this Mississippi Outdoor Stewardship Grant Program. This is brand new, really hasn't been advertised, uh, but it's, it's more or less, it's similar to the, it looks like it's similar to the, um, to the flat grant, like access grant, uh, federal program, but it's a state grant, and it's for recreational access. Now, I, I talked to a guy that's on board of this thing, he said it's not for ball fields, it's not for equipment, so what they. Wes, this is what Wes was, uh, recommended we do, uh, was a, maybe a boat launch or access to, it's the St. Catherine's Creek?
Yeah.
The Province Park, but when I talked to this guy, a lot of him had mentioned that, he actually mentioned boat launches specifically. Uh, but it's basically for access, better access to our county, our public, public parks in general.
Public parks.
Yeah. Um, there's no mention, well, there is, there's mention of match, but there's no match required, but kinda vague. But he says if you match, the more you match, maybe the better, chance of that is going better. Uh, this is brand new, but, uh, anyway, I got a resolution here, it does require a resolution, the county would like it to afford, I'm not sure if Wes is talking to all about. But I do believe this is practically a good one.
In the meantime, uh, Mr. Dollar and Mr. Ford and myself went down and looked at the site last week, I believe. Uh, and, and we are gonna provide a match of some sort, it's gonna be an in-kind match. Uh, we'll go down there, grand road, clean out parking area, and Mr. Ford, that was what he was referencing earlier, he was gonna get some dollar figures to us today, to put it into that form, and, um, and try to move forward on it.
Okay, so I, I'd actually personally launch a kayak from back there before, so this will be a cool project, on a personal level. Anyway, so I've got a resolution here, very similar to a CDBG resolution, just authorizes us, authorizes Adams County to apply, authorizes, um, Southwest Mississippi Planning and Development District to submit the application, and authorizes the President, Warren Gaines, to sign off on everything regarding the application.
What's the name of the grant?
It's called a Mississippi Outdoor Stewardship Grant. So anyway.
Mississippi Wildlife Districts, Stewardship Trust. Mississippi Wildlife Districts, or federal?
No, it's a state grant, ah, yeah, it's, it's somehow through the.
It's the State Wildlife Stewardship Trust. I'll send you that too, so.
Alright.
Oh, yeah, I can do that too.
Uh, you heard the request of Mr. Lab, uh, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Mills, it's properly settled by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? Discussion, um, in the future, I would like to see, uh, here with the road manager, I know it's, uh, get Supervisor Gray's area, but Don Berry, both, uh, there's another one, you can't not do it.
I, I don't wanna deal with that right now, because you, you dealing with somebody private property.
Yeah, alright.
I have to get okay with him before I.
That's what I said, no, I said it in the future, I just wanted to bring a note, okay, any more discussion? There be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by you, and sign a aye. Any opposed, they have the same right.
Alright, last thing I've got is, uh, CDBG applications, we're coming up doing many, and I know Mr. Gaines, we had, we had talked about a potential project in your area, I don't know if there's anything else going on, but I think that would be a good project, it's gonna require some survey of that, that neighborhood, but it was that drainage issue, uh, massive drainage issue, you talked about it in your.
That Phil West over there, uh, that, over there, Phil West and Bluegrass over there, uh, but I know we get.
It affects about six houses in the home, things like roads, it floods those houses.
It floods those houses over there, so that'll be a, uh, yeah.
I don't know if, you know, the CDBG, it's all about how this town scores, how many people are in the area and all that, but we can try. Now, it will require a match, and when it's, CDBG usually, they, what they, their priority is sewer and water. The drainage isn't really a priority, but they do fund some drainage, they fund some roads, uh, so, my point being is, the more you match, the better, uh, more points you'll get for a project like that, that's already gonna score lower than sewer or water, so, it will require a match, and I usually say dollar for dollar, you know, however much money we ask in grant, we need to match it that much. But I have no idea what this is gonna cost.
That's why I said we need, definitely do a survey, but I mean, before we do, but we, uh, so what do you need, permission to act for a survey?
Well, I just went ahead, no, I just went ahead and got, have a resolution put together, uh, and this doesn't, you have to submit the application just to get the process going. I will have to do a, uh, public hearing, and we have, we technically have advertised for, uh, engineers too. So before Mr. Ford can actually, you know, give us a estimate and all that kinda stuff, I need to, if y'all would proceed with it, I can go ahead and advertise for engineers, and, uh, all that stuff.
I'm not, I'm not supposed to present that.
Yes, sir.
You say it also depends on how many residents live in that area?
Right, cost benefit ratio is one of the scoring, uh, criteria, and it's, it's, it, so, basically, you just divide how much you're asking for by how many residents are affected in the area. And there's a point scale system, so I mean, I know y'all said it affects six houses, but really affects the entire area, you know, so.
Yeah, it affects, actually, but this is. Yeah, I know, it's a whole. Like your brother.
Yeah, it affects the whole, you probably got four hundred houses in there, and then it floods the major roads.
So maybe a hundred residents among those four houses?
Probably one hundred residents.
Okay, well, that's good. The more, the more the better.
They don't want me to fail, and not get all the right information of it, that's how.
Yeah, yeah, but no, no, if you're looking at way more than six houses, and you got probably one, you gotta run a hundred residents.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, so bad.
Uh, CDBG, is this the same grant that you gain points for a low and moderate income house?
That's right, it has to be, so that area has to be, that's why you have to serve, like the houses, to make sure that area is fifty-one percent low mod, or low, low income.
So we do get points, right?
It's not.
Yeah, the high percentage is.
It's not, you've got to have, it's got to be.
That's right, that's right.
That's what it is.
Yes.
It's a bit of a beauty.
But the higher percentage it is, the more points you get, that's right.
I know.
When you say how many people are affected, are you talking about just the residents, or you talking about all the traffic dropped down the road?
Just the residents, yeah.
Path through, okay.
It's a grant party, it's, well, I, we ain't no more to it really in depth, but I mean, the road department can tell anybody over there, it'll affect that all major, with the hard right.
Yeah, you swim over there.
You can swim over there, it's been a problem for a long time, but anyway, we're gonna move forward, so what do you need, most approved, uh?
Yeah, a resolution, and if you want me to, I'll, I'll go ahead and approve, I, I can do a public hearing, and, uh, which we can hold anytime, and then advertise for engineers, and, uh, yeah, go from there.
Alright, well, you heard the request of Mr. Adam Lab, Southwest Mississippi, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, can I get a second? It's been properly settled by Supervisor Hudson, I didn't have any discussion, are we ready to vote? All in favor, vote by you, and sign a aye. Any opposed, they have the same right, motion carried now.
That's all I have, I'll give you these, page, I'll give these, these later.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know, let's, get, uh, Mr., Mr. Johnson. That's something coming. For, oh.
He can walk in there. Never gonna get this man back.
That's the one.
They don't want to be there for him.
Free, 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 God, answer your son.
My name is Robert Johnson, and I was killed by, out of town, a sheriff ran it from my life, and killed my horse, man down. Lost control of her truck, and I ain't heard it in front of nobody.
Yes, sir.
And then when I come to talk to her, the traveler, they could be here and there, then I called and left, I was meant to put him in call, he never called me back.
Alright, well.
He, there's been an accident, and he supplied some information to the board a couple of weeks back, we've submitted over to Traveler, so I'll give him a call, and if Traveler rejects it, I'll give you a call, and I'll talk to the board about our options and so forth.
It's been, uh.
It was on the phone.
But, but we know, uh, Mr. Johnson, this is what happened, was, that happened, you know, when you told me that you contacted me, when you told me you contacted me, he had to go through the insurance, you know, we have one insurance that cover all of us, and so once he submitted to the insurance company, then the insurance company, huh, but, but, okay, because, look at me, uh, basically, from my understanding, going up on the fourth, he had horse within his yard, uh, the sheriff lost control, and went and killed his horse, and so.
Superbad game.
Well, well, I'm here, I mean, I don't know.
I was just gonna correct something, the sheriff did lose control.
The sheriff definitely.
Yeah.
Uh, definitely, the sheriff did that, if I, I don't know, I don't know the story, but that's what I hear, so you know, I don't know if that's what was, uh, when they called, said he had horse, uh, the horse was killed or whatever, but that I hadn't seen, I had accident reports, and I don't know.
They got, they got the picture.
We brought them right over there.
Yeah, for everything.
Catches and everything.
Yeah, but I mean, we, we, I'm not, I'm not doubting what you're saying, I'm just saying the process, it had to go through the insurance, and the insurance gonna give it, the attorney, and then the attorney gonna come.
What I said, yeah, I didn't like the way it happened, when he come back two thirty in the morning, when they be on the door, told me he had hit the horse, then I went back, he had killed, he was up in the lot, he would truck back, truck out the lot, and put it up on the corner, and it stopped him there.
Okay, and we'll, we'll, standing is right there for the sheriff.
And then, then he would get a report of that, then get a report, then he would talk to me about it like the horse had been, nothing, I ain't been there, so, two thirty in the morning.
Mr. Johnson, we gonna have it, okay, we gonna have it.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm sorry it's taking you a while, we'll do everything we can, okay? Yes, sir, thanks for coming.
Alright. Alright, Mr. Parker, here we go, we found a guy to catch in here.
I apologize for the fact that I cannot be still, uh, it's, it's medical, it's called ADHD, and I just can't, I cannot be still, I'm gonna wait for the attorney to get back in here. But I've got some good news, and, uh, good news, uh, better than bad news. Don't mind, I'm gonna take my jacket off, 'cause I was walking around, I've been doing, it's got me kinda heated up.
Alright.
Uh, as you know, uh, when I was here last, Unit Degree was requesting a four-point-nine percent rate increase. Uh, I kept talking to Jules, the boss of Unit Degree, and, uh, going back and forth, and finally, I said, look, I want you to talk to Scott. And so, I gave Jules Scott's number, they got together, and at the front of discussing, the rate increase was cut in half, to two-point-five percent. Now, to give everybody a little perspective, uh, I went back and looked at contracts going back to twenty nineteen. Now, some of you may or may not have been here, but in this time period between twenty nineteen and now, uh, this county has had some incredible claims problems. One was a liver transplant, and, uh, some of you may, I know Angela was here when this was going on, and it was, uh, not only the, the medical problem, but it was a, uh, a litigious problem with this particular person, and, uh, but anyway, we got that handled, uh, I realized that when you have a liver transplant, you're immediately available for SSI, disability, et cetera, and I helped us employ Get Off of the County, and Get On with the Disability. Uh, but there have been some incredible claim situations in the last few years, uh, and we have some going on right now. But in short, going back to twenty nineteen, the unit re- the reinsurance cost that year was seven-hundred forty thousand four hundred sixteen dollars ninety cents. In twenty twenty was seven twenty-five nine twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, seven forty-nine five, seven forty-nine ninety-five, twenty-two, uh, seven, about seven forty, and with the increase in twenty-three, it brings it to seven sixty-one two forty-three. So if you go back one, two, three, four years, where in terms of reinsurance costs twenty thousand dollars more than twenty nineteen. Considering the claims, problems, and, and the increasing number of claims due to the aging population, uh, I think that this, the cost of the reinsurance has been pretty much held about the same, it's been in check, and, which is pretty amazing when I look back and think about the claims issues, et cetera. Uh, that being said, on the Blue Cross side, uh, as I mentioned in the last meeting, Blue Cross was going up a dollar per employee on the admin cost. I have offset that by reducing my costs, which keeps that total cost the same. Uh, so, all this being said, I would recommend going ahead and approving this contract, and moving on, and getting this all set up. Uh, so, that's what I put before you today.
Sounds good, me, uh, Scott, we need a motion for that?
We don't need a motion, we need to discuss, I need this, I need.
Do you need a motion, do you need to put a motion? What you got?
I'm just asking, quick, so we got, like, we had seven-hundred fifty thousand for reinsurance.
Yes.
You say we had a lot of sick people, right?
Sir.
You say we had a lot of sick people?
Yes, sir, I, I believe we've, uh, met an executive session, looked at some of those claims.
You did?
So, out of the seven-hundred fifty thousand for reinsurance, how much? How much was reimbursed at the county?
Well, that, what depends, what that depends on is the spec, the document is fifty thousand, so when an employee hits fifty, goes over fifty thousand, any amount of that comes back to the county, and I, we discussed this with Scott, uh, and I went back and looked at it, and here's what's going on, there are a lot more claims, and some of them haven't hit that fifty thousand. Now, I believe the county recently may have gotten a check, Scott, or about to.
About thirty grand?
Uh, well, there should have been, there's one coming for about thirty-five, so, uh, did, did, if my memory serves me correct, I went back and forward, and, uh, also, uh, Unit Degree has reduced the lasers by three-hundred fifty thousand dollars on.
Unit DeBree has reduced the lasers by three hundred fifty thousand dollars on, uh, on some several employees. So you've got a positive there.
I, I don't know, uh, this insurance is getting great, I know, I know we have, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand of reinsurance, and, and he just said we got reimbursed thirty thousand dollars. And that's all we got reimbursed. Why is it increased?
Because of the, that's a great question, because of the number, when you have more claims, it costs the reinsurance company more money to adjudicate the claims, because they don't, when a claim comes through, Ricky, uh, supervisor Gray, they don't just go, oh, there's a claim, take it off and pay. They have to go through a lot of process, if they have, uh, doctors and nurses, et cetera, that analyze the claim, make sure the claim is a valid claim. Then we go through a process making sure that the employee or the defendant is still eligible for coverage. So it has to, also there are more employees, there's nine, I think eight or nine more, the, the population has increased in terms of number of employees. So when you take into account that also, just in, in that four years, if you look, look up the inflation rate of the medical costs, it's running about seven to ten percent.
Mr. President, this is my last thing, and, 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 uh, when you first came, Fred, I'm not pointing the finger at you, but when you first came, these people said that it was gonna be how much?
Four point nine.
Now I thought it was something they would finally wait to drop it down to how much?
Two point five.
Well, that may be one that we shouldn't even be getting an increase at all.
Well, I can tell you.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, and I have, and I can tell you why, because, uh, Jules and Unit DeBree look at this as a long-term relationship, and they're willing. Actually, the medical trend, and I said this last time, medical trend, that rising cost of just medical cost is running nine point eight. So.
But the amount they pay us, I'm not sure what the cost or how much money actually gets booked into our account. I don't know why, I mean, I'm looking at what I can do, reinsurance, and I think, you know, I think everyone's pleased with Fred Parker, local, the way you do it. The question is, is, uh, about the reinsurance question, aren't we, don't we pay so much for reinsurance? Our worst year we had, we got reimbursed six hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Well, that.
And our, and our fees are seven hundred, and I guess it will be seven hundred fifty thousand.
Well, that has to do with the spec claims, how many people go over fifty thousand dollars? You can have, you can have a whole lot of claims that are twenty-five and thirty and forty. And Unit DeBree is still processing and making sure those valid claims, et cetera. Now.
Thanks, Mr. President, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and I don't think anyone's complaining about Blue Cross Blue Shield's insurance costs, is they got, they have increased theirs, but I think they do really good. I mean, everyone likes the confidence that Blue Cross Blue Shield gives you. But just, just a question about reinsurance, what would stop us from just channeling that money into our self-insured plan and carry our own risks? And if we have.
That is a great question.
And if we have our own, if we, if we had a bad year, then you do, you do a loan to cover that year that, you know, we pay all money.
Well, because some of these claims, uh, to give you an example, uh, not that long ago, Blue Cross had a child that was in a four wheeler wreck and had head injury that equaled ten million dollars. That's why you have a reinsurance, simply put. I mean, I, I have this conversation with clients on every type of insurance, whether it's Medicare, homeowners, or auto. And I have, like they'll say on their health insurance, why am I paying this? I haven't filed a claim. And I'm, my response is usually, you're homeowners. You pay every year, your homeowners insurance, your auto insurance, when was the last time you filed a claim? I've never filed a claim. But if you did, like when I got T-boned in twenty nineteen, I got sued for a hundred thousand dollars. If I had tried to insure myself for that hundred thousand dollars, it wouldn't have worked. So the cost of the reinsurance is for those, those possibilities, which are there. And I, I get what you're saying, trust me. Uh, now also.
So you're saying the more claims we have, the more reinsurance money we get, right? Is that correct?
No.
It was fifty, that's what I'm saying, it's over fifty, that's why I think it's over fifty. So let me ask you this.
And they haven't been laser, so they're not a predictably sick person too. So all the really sick ones, they already let the, they laser them out and raise their limit. And so this is just an unexpected catastrophe that you have, that you can't cover. And then the next year, as soon as they can, they bump it up to make it a predictable amount of those spending.
Well, um.
It's just what he says, you're, you are just trying to cover yourself for unanticipated big expenses, like a ten million dollar class.
Right, so since all of those that who have left, that we've had, we had about seven.
Right. Real.
So, yeah, the real, the ones that had those high claims. So how would that affect our insurance now, should we?
Well, they, no, they just don't have lasers, okay? Those people that are gone, they're gone. So to answer your question, Angela, uh, there, uh, and this is common with reinsurance. When, when you know, for instance, if you had four DUIs, a vehicle, a manslaughter, and five speeding tickets, and you went to buy auto insurance, your auto insurance would figure that into the cost of your insurance. That's what's happening with these lasers, they can look at it and predict it, and the fact on one of these lasers, say, decreased it dramatically. Uh, that's, that's a good thing. Uh, but when I went and pulled, I ran a report that said I need every claim over fifty thousand dollars in two years. There just weren't that many. It's just a whole lot of small claims, and then what you're paying the money, the reinsurance money for, is what if?
Yeah.
That the county doesn't just get them.
Well.
It's supposed, it's because you can't afford to.
Yeah, it's probably.
I mean, it's, you know, pushing, so you're necessary, you gotta cover yourself for catastrophes, but not fifty thousand dollars.
I wasn't here, how much was it costing us before we went to the reinsurance, had straight policy?
That was in twenty sixteen, and I don't know, and I had a discussion with.
We could not, Angela, correct me if I'm wrong, is your memory is better than mine on these things? We at first could not get Blue Cross Blue Shield, they basically put us on penalty box, we couldn't get Blue Cross Blue Shield fully insured, so they offered the self-insure. And I, we just, we've had years and years and years of pretty good luck, um, and so we just kept on self-insured with that. But we had switched to United, because Blue Cross Blue Shield had gotten too expensive, and United really just wasn't covering our employees' life. And so we managed to try to switch back to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they wouldn't let us on fully insured the claim.
Is that still, still in place?
Well, that was what I was gonna say next. I had a discussion with Pete Hawkins, who is the director of sales in the entire state of Mississippi, about a month ago. And we want to get back to fully insured at some point. The problem is, right now with these kind of claims, he said if he brought this to his, to the section of the, of Blue Cross that would do a fully underwritten plan with these claims, he says the cost would be just absurd. And, and he said they probably would tell him, no, we're not gonna look at this, because of some of these claims going on.
But then we have a good sense, this is people that don't, don't have any claims at all, so.
And that, and, I, you know, praying things improve, I mean, you know, uh, and this is my county too, and that's why over the, when I, when the board voted me to be a representative, uh, since that time, I've reduced my charges, et cetera, to, I mean, I'm in it, I'm in it for the long haul. Yeah, I, I don't want, uh, to see this county suffer. On another note, last year, due diligence, I got reinsurance program for three or four overcomers. None of them beat Unit DeBree. I mean, and I've got the figures, and I think I gave them to y'all that year. Uh, and in fact, on some of these, uh, individuals that were laser, the lasers offered by, uh, Liberty Mutual, uh, US Fire, uh, they were, they were more, it cost more. And again, I, you know, I, I talked to Jules, I said, hey, I'm getting other quotes. And you got, you know, beat them, we're, we're moving. And, uh, so.
Uh, I mean, things have already been said, we cannot afford to go without a reinsurance, but, I mean, I, I don't know, bringing back to attention of the board on last year, um, when we came to this time. Uh, I know we gotta move forward insurance, but sir, my last, my memory, sir, be wrong, whether we gonna also get a quote from a massive insurance? Or was it?
Yes, sir, that's, we did, that was, that was for property, we got one, actually, that'd be higher than what we.
Okay.
Process was very painful, wasn't it? That was not fun.
Okay, well, we know we gotta go without reinsurance, I mean, so you got any more, uh?
Uh, the only other thing that I have to say is, is that I appreciate the board working with me, and, uh, we do, on another note, what I, the, the point I raised in terms of the ten thousand dollar travel benefit for look transplant recipients, that is still in question, but, uh, that, that goes into play unless y'all say, we don't wanna do that, then I have to get a form that says, hey, we don't wanna do that. So, uh, I'm sure, the main issue here is, uh, do we wanna move forward and with this contract as it is, and, uh, get this wrapped up?
Mr. President, one of the benefits of having a self-insured plan is that it gives you a little more discretion in what you wanna cover and not cover as well. So this is something that Blue Cross Blue Shield has started to add, and we can decide to add it or not.
Alright.
Yeah, let me, one more, with one more thing. Uh, and, uh, a person came before this, uh, came to me, and I met with the executive session, and I mentioned this, I'm seeing this a lot, where physicians, facilities send, like if supervisor Gray went to a doctor in Jackson, they might send his labs to some lab that is not in network, not covered, and you can get a bill for two thousand five hundred dollars for a set of labs. That happened to a county employee recently, I don't think it was that much. I brought it before the board, we did a benefit exception, it was sent back to that same lab, and this employee ended up paying about a hundred thirty dollars for that, that bill. That isn't flexibility that a, uh, self-funded plan gives you. Also, when you have a fully funded plan, there's a two percent tax that was put in there via the Affordable Care Act that you don't see, it's just built in there. There's a tax you don't, that on a self-funded plan, you don't pay. So, I mean, there's the, the, the benefits can be great, but when you're having a bad year, you feel like you made a bad decision. And that's just, and the same thing is, when you have a fully funded plan, uh, if you have a really, really bad year, Blue Cross, United Healthcare, or whomever can come back and say, you're getting a thirty-five percent increase, and there is no will room.
Alright, well, we heard it, and he's been having, well explained, what's the matter to the board?
We need to go ahead and make, make a motion.
We need to make a motion to accept it, or we need to, you need to follow the rules, or we need to move forward?
More progress.
Alright, what's, what's the, uh, progress of the board? We ain't got no choice, we gotta have it. I think proper move by supervisor Wilson and proper second by supervisor Petcher, in discussion.
Mr. President, I, I gotta say, whether it's good or bad, it's always gonna go up.
Alright.
The only discussion I have is he asked a question, and we got, we gotta answer that question, it's about the, uh, ten thousand dollar transplant, part of the policy. Oh, are we gonna accept it or not?
That's included, right?
Provides coverage for your employees. If that's the, if that's the new standard.
Okay, well, he, and the, the question had to be answered.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, give them a discussion. All the favor votes by you can sign an eye.
Eye.
And opposed, may they have a sign right, motion carry now.
Mr. President.
Alright, yes, sir.
With this increase, if we gonna have to pay, when do we, when we gonna have to pay?
That begins April one, twenty twenty-three.
That's another budget increase, that's what we want, but we didn't, we didn't have any budget for an increase in insurance.
About thirteen grand.
Uh, I will, uh, have to, uh, give kudos where kudos are, uh, should be given in that, uh, Scott worked with Jules and myself, and, uh, you should all be, uh, very thankful that you have a very involved, uh, board of members.
Yeah, Jules and Brad were very polite as I was rambling and mowing and.
And handling.
I really appreciate Fred.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you, uh, Nick.
Uh, one last, one, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Could I wait for you to, uh, could I wait for the end of the meeting and get the preliminary contract signed, and we can try to wrap this and get all the, everything done?
Yeah, yes, sir, dear. Make sure Fred uses.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
Appreciate you, man.
Thank you.
Alright.
Have you got it with you?
Yeah.
Do you have it with you?
Yes, sir.
Have you bring it? He loves to sign stuff.
That's what I'm saying, I can, that's why I tell, I can sell my pay, you get a copy, who got, and, uh, who's, uh?
Who is that?
Who's that? Mr.?
Sir?
Sir?
No, that's my, that's friend of mine. He, 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 he good, he with me.
He just, he just watching over you?
Yeah.
He's by.
I'm in all of the country towns, what I feel y'all paying.
Oh, okay.
That's how I think.
Alright.
He ain't, uh, I was gonna recognize him, since he recognized himself in my meeting, I ain't never heard. I'm bonding just like you, Fred.
Alright. Alright, uh, any more public comments? Somebody will come to the table?
I said, Mr. President, I ain't gonna be long, uh. It's on the agenda still.
I, uh.
Yeah, what do we do with the triage, this is our arrow?
Mr. President, I, uh.
I don't know what, alright, move forward, did, uh, yeah, of course, if we gonna figure that out.
Yes, sir, that's, uh, I was on the meeting, uh, thinking very, right, with MAS, and, and they did mention that, uh, I think they moved that date from, uh, the increase in periods to next year. It's supposed to be October, twenty-two thousand, twenty-three, I think they moved it to July first, two thousand and twenty-four, so I don't think we gonna have to put that amount in the budget this year, because they moved it to two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay.
Now check on that page.
That's, that's correct, that's correct, I think I saw that.
Okay, and, uh, this is a letter that I wrote to this. Copperchur Sanders, the, the executive. that I wrote to this Copperter Sanders, the, the executive director of Mississippi Volunteer Lawyer Projects, Air Project Workshop. I'm making a recommendation, uh, to expect my interest in engaging in Mississippi Volunteer Lawyer Project to assist residents in Napson, Adams County with their air property ownership issues. Uh, in African-American community, we didn't overcome houses reside in properties that were owned by relatives and now they are deceased. Their resi, their residents are in need of repair, and they cannot receive assistance from federal state programs because they do not have a clear title on this property. It would be extremely beneficial to Mississippi Volunteer Lawyer Project if they can come down and do a workshop to provide technical assistance and professional guidance to these residents. And this is the letter, and I just say, please let me know what you can do, and, uh, we can, see what we can do to accommodate you. Uh, I just wanted to bring this to the board of supervisors and let them know that I'm sending a letter to, uh, these people to come down and, uh, see can they assist some of these residents that got all these problems. I heard they do this over the state, they, they could come down and do this. Now, me being a, uh, former alderman of Ward Two, I seen that a whole lot, and as Supervisor District Four, I see it a whole lot, so, that, this is the letter I'm gonna mail off today to, uh, Ms. Copperter Sanders, to see could they come down and assist us with, uh, some of these issues that face some of our constituents.
All right, any board members have a problem with it? Yeah, well, I see a problem here.
Mr. President, it's a serious concern.
Yeah.
Your problem, that's a break, that would be wonderful, it makes, you know, you have such a small interest, it's not worthwhile, you get a break, you gotta get a break for everything.
Yeah, I dealt with it for sixteen years, and it seemed it was really, really bad. Now I'm in the county, and I see the same thing, and some of the people that, uh, try to get snap racks or whatever, in case they live in air property houses, they don't qualify, but the houses really need some assistance. So maybe if we can get somebody to come down and help them kind of clear up the title on some of these houses, maybe they can apply for a snap rack, or whatever, some of that money we sent over there to Southwest Planning to help them get something done on their, on their house.
That, that land stays stagnant, because it can't be marketed, so it's just a break line.
That's something, that's something I mentioned also, and I mentioned that also because, uh, when they're doing the snap plant, we have problems getting people to apply because of those reasons, and that was something I had.
Yeah, uh, I was gonna recognize my alderman from Riperton County, Mr. Gene Lofton, but he, you know, recognized himself, how you doing, Mr. Lofton? The president did, I did. Thank you, Mr. President. And, uh, I, 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 I'm, 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 I'll get you where it won't be done. My simply goes out to the Belton family, the Boone family, the Boone family, uh, the Hendricks family, the Lucky family, the Wiley family, the Wells family, and, uh, I know y'all know Ms. Goss, she teaches, she lost her son, William Goss, and the Audenau family. I didn't bring up Ms. Ruby White Osaba, because I'm gonna make a motion that we do a proclamation in honor of Ms. Ruby Osaba and Mr. William Goss.
That's motion I second.
If you're proper move, and proper second, it's been proper move by Supervisor Gray and proper second by Supervisor Hutchins, and we do a, uh, red alert for, uh, this Ruby Osaba and, uh, Mr. William Goss, uh, in the discussion. All in favor, vote by you, and sign a I.
Aye.
In a pose, may they have the same right.
Thank you, Mr. President, and last, my simply goes out to the, uh, individuals that lost their life on Morgantown Road.
All right.
And I'm gonna continue to pray for the people that continue to have wrecks on county road. And now this is the brother of one of the young men used to go to Cathedral, everybody know Warren Gray, because he was a great basketball player, but they didn't really know his younger brother. He had a serious accident a couple days ago with three other young men in the car, and I'm gonna be praying for him and his family, and thank God he even got out of there with them, with them individuals without nobody getting killed. And that concludes my report. Over, one thing I gotta say, the trip to DC, I'm on the, uh, Transportation Committee, I know Supervisor Hudson on the Workforce Committee, uh, uh, four days ago, coming from New Orleans. And, uh, we got a lot of companies on the Transportation Committee, I just wanna say this, every county, pretty much that was represented in that committee wanted the president, uh, it don't make no difference, because this comes from NACO, because we have problems when we get money sent down from the federal government, then all of a sudden, the state of Mississippi put, uh, some old stipulations on the money that they send down to counties, so, uh, NACO leadership through the Transportation Committee, I wanna recommend to the president that if possible, that money go directly to counties and, and, and take out the red tape, because they like, got a lot of stuff going on with Transportation Committee, and I, I ain't mean, I ain't really wanna bring this up, but I, I, I'm really disappointed in what's going on in Jackson, Mississippi with, with, uh, the politics that they playing in the legislature to try to strongarm the, 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 uh, city of Jackson and that community, and it's in Jackson now, but it could be out in Adams County later, depending on the report.
Superlative.
Now, I agree with you on that, Supervisor Gray, he's been talking about a lot at NACO about what was going on, and like, uh, he, uh, he was saying, it can happen now, but it can happen to us, because it's trying to happen in other counties that, uh, somebody brought up in NACO that they're trying to do to them too, Georgia, right? So, we better be very careful when we look at that, because it can hit home, uh, and which would not be good. Um, do I need to bring something, you're gonna bring this up?
I'll bring it up. Talking about praise.
Okay, all right. What I have is, uh, I wanted to ask, have we received the, any reimbursement from the handles and the language, have we received, received the one point? Something million they was gonna give us?
The board, the board, you make a decision, that's to an appeal, I think we had some guidance, formal decision of, of not appealing and just accepting. Uh, if the board wants to do that, we can go ahead and do that.
Yeah.
That's what it sounded like last time, the child.
We won't be out of much, I mean, two hundred thousand, let's just go ahead and get that one point something, then get that three hundred thousand.
Exactly, maybe half a million child, but then the three hundred thousand will.
We'll take no for granted, maybe two hundred thousand, get that.
And I, and I did, uh, so I, I, the only thing I was wondering about that from the last thing he said is, we can contend, we can get our money, and, uh, appealing it would not score our money up, now that's, that's, that's. That was the question, so if he was, if he was gonna, if you was gonna be able to get the one point one and the three hundred thousand and appeal it.
Not the three hundred thousand, you get the one point.
One point one in the appeal.
But the appeal will stop.
Once that's over, we get our three hundred.
Stopped or slowed down?
Well, I mean, it wouldn't come in until that.
Until the appeal was up.
Which could be nine months, could be three months, could be two years or so.
I'd like to make, put a motion out there to go ahead and accept it.
You heard the, uh, second. It's been moved by Supervisor.
Get that money.
And Hutchins, and it's been, uh, accepted by Supervisor Gray, uh, they're in a discussion. In discussion, all in favor, vote by you, and sign a I. In a pose, may they have the same right, motion carried now.
Okay, the other thing I have is, I reached out to Alderman, being there was a few, uh, months ago about the light moving holiday apartment. I was glad to hear that it's been done, he gave me a call, um, last week, and said the light had been put up at, at the entrance of Holiday Apartment, and thought I'd, I'd thank him for doing it. And that's all I have.
Supervisor Milton?
Yeah, most of my items were covered, uh, during reports, the only, uh, I got two items, um, probably two years ago, I requested to convert the intersection of Hutchins Landing and Royal Woodville Road to a four-way stop. We got a lot of calls about it, line spots coming around the corner, and I think most residents down there are very happy that we did that. Uh, for a while now, I've, I've been getting complaints about, uh, the intersection of York Road and Royal Woodville Road, which would be the intersection just due south of that intersection, right there behind the Dollar General in the city. Uh, so I would like to make a motion, uh, to turn that into a four-way stop.
You heard the, uh, request of Supervisor Milton, uh, can I get a second?
Say.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor. York Road and, and Royal Woodville. Uh, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Milton and properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins, in discussion?
Mr. Dollar, I spoke with him about it, there are two stop signs there already, so we'll just be adding to. Do we need to put any rumble strips up or anything?
We can, we'll put a heat strip.
Because it's gonna be an adjustment, uh, these people get used to it.
The white paint, the stop off, and then we'll put the rumble strips.
Don't have the stop sign at all?
Yeah. Royal Woodville side, if you don't.
Royal Woodville both ways, nothing coming from east or west.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
All right, uh, any more discussion? All in favor, vote by you, and sign a I.
Aye.
Aye, in a pose, may they have the same right, motion carried now.
Next thing I had, uh, Mr. Grantland said in his, uh, comments that he's never received a letter of completion from the engineer. I don't ever recall hearing that, does anybody else?
What, yeah?
That he's never received a letter of completion from the engineer?
I don't know where that, that's the first I've heard of.
Do you typically get those?
So, as a contractor, if I was Mr. Grantland, I would be at that podium raising nine kinds of you-know-what with the engineer until I had that letter in hand. This shouldn't fall on the county, this shouldn't fall on the, on the contractor, which it's falling on, it's falling on the engineer who doesn't give him that letter of completion. I mean, he's the one losing money, if he's maintaining the project sixteen, eighteen months.
He ain't, he ain't. It just happened that way on the proponent, maybe it was on one of these EWP's, it hasn't happened that way, I mean, this is a year on these others, so I'm putting.
If we get that letter, and we get that year, you go check it like you did last week, and it's not done, then we're cut. If we can handle it on our end. That's all I got to say about that.
All right. Any more, uh, Supervisor?
Okay, uh, Robbie pretty much, uh, took care of the thing that, that I was wondering about it, and then we've got one more thing that, uh, Winola Drive, they want a speed hump on it, but, uh, they've got, uh, seven signatures. You have to have seventy-five percent of the resident that it, that it affects, is that right? Because those same.
They deal there.
Tubman Road.
Yeah, not people traveling, people on the road.
Oh, okay. What, what on the hotbed residence on that road? Can, who's gonna, would that be before you went to?
One real business.
Oh. W I, W I N O L A.
If the engineer has to approve it, then they take into a bunch of considerations, uh, and ultimately, the board can give one or not, they don't have to.
You want to see that? And that concludes my report.
All right, uh, just the first page, Dean.
Um, yes, I have, first I have a transfer from Dr. Razz's office from Civil Defense Other Mobile Equipment under five thousand fund, for two thousand, going to the Civil Defense Travel and Subsistence Fund. And then, from the County Fire Fund, Travel and Subsistence, for a thousand, to the County Fire Fund, all the supplies and materials.
You heard the request of the Deputy Clerk, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins. It's been properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson, in discussion? There be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, and sign a I.
Aye.
In a pose, may they have the same right, motion carried now.
Um, the, well, county administrator has made an appointment to hire the new purchase clerk and the assistant purchase clerk. So the new purchase clerk will be Ms. Denise Price, annual rate's forty thousand. And Xavier Hawkins will be the assistant purchase clerk, at an hourly rate of twelve dollars and one cent, annual twenty-five thousand a year.
You heard the request of, uh, Deputy Clerk, uh, requesting for the, uh, active administration, can I get a, uh, motion, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, can I get a second? It's been properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson, to hire Denise Price as the purchase clerk and Xavier Hawkins as the, uh, assistant purchase clerk, in a discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Graham, if I'm wrong, but I believe that assistant purchasing clerk is supposed to have assistant purchasing clerk slash floater? Uh, I just wanna make sure that that is documented in the.
Uh, but, it is on paperwork. All right, thank you, uh, Supervisor Milton. Are we, any more discussion? Are you ready to vote? All in favor, vote by you, and sign a I. In a pose, may they have the same right.
We have two modifications from Core Civic. Um, first one is obligation of funding. And the other one is to update the contracting officer and contract specialist.
All right, you heard the request of the Deputy Clerk, uh, Paige Dean.
Sir, move.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson. Milton, yeah, yeah, just saying that, now in discussion? All in favor, vote by you, and sign a I. In a pose, may they have the same right.
Pressing in.
Yes.
Guys, I have a question, I wanna ask a question. Um, Ms. Dean.
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell me what was the salary of the purchasing clerk?
What?
Purchasing clerk, forty, it should be more. It should be the same as all department heads, that's what, the department heads.
They got raised, everybody got raised, this forty.
Two some.
Forty-two.
Two.
Yeah, it's supposed to be the same, all department heads supposed to make the same.
Blue sky.
I'm not department head. I'm your, uh.
Like, uh, this, uh, this, uh, the five percent, yeah, she makes.
We got five percent raised on.
Forty-two, almost forty-three thousand.
Well, everybody got it.
Everybody got a new sign.
Everybody got five percent raised on that.
So I'd like to amend that motion that it be the same, as all department heads.
So who, who, who second?
Then that be the second.
Do you wanna amend that motion that our department heads make this, is that time?
When we do the minutes, minute, they're gonna have to write it down in there.
Yeah.
It just had to be a fair and reasonable interpretation, which y'all did, y'all were envisioning paying or the same significant department heads.
So I don't need to amend that. All right.
Um, and the last thing I have is to spread across the minutes, the January tax reduction settlement.
You heard the request of the Deputy Clerk, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Milton, properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins, are they in a discussion? Be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by you, and sign a I. In a pose, may they have the same right, motion carried. All right, uh, attorney, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir, sorry. I need a motion to approve an MOU for drug court, we have previously adopted it with the prior senior judge, but when she, she made it so that it didn't expire, the, um, this is for the software that allows them to decide whether a candidate for drug court is good or not, and it's paid for by the grant.
All right, you heard the request of the Deputy Clerk, make a motion. Alright, you heard the request of the Milton Clerk, make a motion.
Board Attorney.
I mean, Board Attorney, Board Attorney, sorry. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Milton, Milton properly settled by Supervisor Gray. Are there any discussion? All in favor, vote by you, sign a I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carry or not?
Mr. President, the, alright, law, my eyes kind of want to. Our lobbyists are trying to, would like to get the president and myself to go to DC in March. I know they need to check in your schedule. Um, that's something we can, you know, take, take care of, tell them one way or the other.
Yeah, I'm, I'm checking stuff, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, but I'll find out, I'll find out today, so if we can.
If it's the board prerogative, can we approve the travel and come report back just in case?
Oh, yeah, I'm going for it.
The lobbyist asks us to go up there and solicit the same thing that y'all done with our senators and so forth.
I mean, I ain't got no problem with it, but when you go lobby, what are you lobbying for? The board at least need to know.
Yes, sir.
I'll get back with y'all to make sure I know.
Yeah, I think they said, I talked with Greg, I had spoken with Greg, I had saw him in Airport. He mentioned to, I think he said it was going to be some of the city projects, uh, maybe it's more the lighting on the bridge and like the airport and workforce, this kind of things like that.
Also supposed to be soliciting for the port.
Yeah, and port, yes.
Which is our top priority that we set.
It was a top priority.
I just want to know, because.
I don't know, I don't know.
Or this board discussing a priority and a wish this or whatever it came, maybe I haven't seen it, so I just want to know.
Yeah, but we still haven't achieved our port liquid loading dock that we're, that we're trying to get, and that's our, and we want that discussed first.
Alright, well, you heard the request of Attorney, can I get a motion?
Sir, move.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray and properly settled by Supervisor Hutchins, are there any discussion? All in favor, vote by you, sign a I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carry or not? What day is it?
We personally, I'll tell you. We don't want to announce.
You don't want to announce when you're out of town.
I mean, I've been. With Stanley coming over to my house.
Alright, Scott, move forward, ready?
Uh, I have an idea to determine, uh, and on Thursday, we asked to talk about garbage. I did the same spreadsheet that we did the last time, filled in those numbers. You know, you get a couple of different options for it, you could accept both and negotiate both, you could accept one, you could accept neither. But, you know, we need to talk about it and get y'all's thoughts and start moving forward because, you know, if it's a new provider, they're going to need advance notice. The sooner we get them notice it's a new provider, the, the, smoother the transition will be.
Oh, uh, on that note, can we figure out why these gentlemen are here with the garbage companies?
That's ADSI, they're here because they knew we were going to discuss it today.
We were hopeful.
Yeah.
Oh, it was just hopeful.
And you told it. It actually says Tuesday, says Tuesday in your memory.
They'll discuss it, if he wants to come, he's certainly invited.
Yes.
You said you did what?
What?
You said you reached out?
I didn't reach out to them, I talked to them and said we're going to discuss it today, so he's certainly invited.
President, let me, let me say this.
And I'll, and I'm, sorry, I'll.
I may be wrong for saying this, but I'm not interested in negotiating down like we did last time and put somebody in an uncomfortable position, uh, like we did last time. Now, you got two companies that bid it, and you got so many companies that wouldn't even bid because it was, it was low. So now, you, you, you asking somebody to go lower? I don't know how they can even survive going lower than what they already at, that's just my opinion.
Well, I'll, I'll comment on that, anybody that makes a bid on a project has a cushion built in there somewhere, and they know what that cushion is. So, they're not going to go any lower than they think they need to, if they do, they're, they're crazy. Well, and, and look, we're got, we got home with fifty thousand dollars extra. Well, they should have built some of that in, uh, just.
You, you, you don't understand the politics we played next time, if you were, you was here.
No, I, I don't, I wasn't, I wasn't here for that. But I'm here for this.
Hey.
Alright, we're going to move forward and we're going to discuss what, what y'all finished discussing, I mean, what's.
Did you throw, were you throwing?
Well, you threw, no, he wasn't.
And just, it just apply too, even though they're here, we have to make our decision as to whether they're qualified or not, it has to be within the bounds of the proposal. So, then, anyone's invited to our, our public meetings, and we said that, I said, yeah, always welcome.
I mean, I'm not.
But we can't, you know.
I'm not, you know what I'm saying, I'm not denying, uh, you know, because anybody, if public meetings open and we're going to negotiate a contract and if you think it's going to be approved, uh, I'll approve that thing, no, I'm just saying, if, asking them, they should be here. So I'm not saying they have any kind of problem not being here, I mean, that's, that's what we here for. We do bids in the public, so we don't have no questions about what's down behind the clothes, though, we do great bids in the public.
Yes, sir.
Alright.
May I, Mike, want to comment?
Yes, you can.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, you want, new, or a contractor, a new contractor to start basically fifty days from today, or tomorrow, is that correct?
Come out.
I will bid including carts, once a week or twice a week. That's the only way our proposal will give, via carts. If we don't notify, it's not a strong arm tactic, I don't, I'm not trying to do that at all. If we don't notify our vendor, we've already got to extend the opportunity for the carts to tomorrow, to pull the trigger. To be sure that we can get the carts, have them delivered to every house by April, twelfth, thirteenth, whatever, excuse me, whatever the date is. Uh, we have agreed in the conversation to provide collection without the carts on a temporary basis till they come in. But, one of the main questions, the carts are the primary issue. Secondly, do you want to go once a week with a cart or twice a week? I mean, I heard the discussion at the pre-proposal meeting, uh, we've got all the trucks. Because we got more trucks for twice a week than we do for once a week. These are questions on the board can answer. Uh, we, we are hamstrung right now, we can't do anything else.
Well, I mean, unless I'm, unless I heard wrong, I thought it was clear in the last meeting that everything was going to be on twice a week, no.
Well.
Did I not make it?
I understood the same thing, but I did not realize at that time that the proposal for him had once a week on his way.
It does.
That's why it was once a week.
I understand, but, I mean, I think it was clear that we, we couldn't have it once a week, it would have to be twice a week pickup, that was one of them.
And I would ask you for consideration, certainly not trying to sway you in any amount. Uh, every county we do save one using carts, every one of those stands goes once a week.
It won't have any other county.
That's true.
Alright, Mr. Milton.
Um, so the way I see this, uh, I've been thinking about it, and I think we have a few options. Financially, what makes sense is once a week. I understand there's some hesitancy there, I was hesitant, and I'm not saying I'm, I'm a fan of it, okay? But I do know that I have looked into it, I have done some research, there are a ton of counties that do once a week. Change is hard for people, I get it. Uh, I, it's twice a week at my house, and I fill it up every, every time, okay? But the price difference is substantial. The six-year contract scares me to death. The CPI is pretty ridiculous. And, and I'm not faulting anybody, it's just, it is what it is. Purchase our own trucks. Uh, uh, I know, I get it, I do, I get it, but y'all, you're going nine dollars a house to twenty-six dollars a house? How in the heck are we going to pay for this? You got to think outside the box, sometimes you got to weigh your options, you really got to think about this. Uh, or, what I've been an advocate of from day one, is to try to get on schedule with the city when their term expires and bid this as a whole. Whether it works or it doesn't work, at least we're on the same schedule to when it expires, the next time we can try it again. Whether I'm in here, or you're in here, whoever's in here. Those are the four options that I've been thinking about, and I really think everybody in this room is giving some thought.
So, with that being said, I mean, Scott, what, what is, what was the date, nine-day contract, what'd you say, April the twelfth, maybe?
Twelve to thirteen.
Twelve to thirteen.
So when a decision has to be made.
So, the two-step process, it's odd, you select the proposal or proposers that are the most qualified, and you can negotiate from there. That's the exact wording of the statute, and it doesn't have to be on the basis of a proposal. Selecting the qualified proposal has to be within the basis of what's proposed to you. So, you can select one or two, and then contract with them and move forward on that. If you select none, but, I don't know what you're doing to that sort of thing, so. The price is very, very close, the first years for Metro is, is lower, but it's about one point eight percent difference, one point nine percent difference.
But that's not cost.
Alright.
Supervisor Milton.
Yes, sir.
Can I say something, President, guy? You said residents are paying nine dollars, they're paying fifteen.
That's what our bid was.
Yeah.
Nine dollars a house in our last contract.
That's for a collection rate.
That's a collection rate, right.
And this is toward the city.
Plus you got your disposal, and then you got your employees, so it rounds up about fifteen dollars.
Fifteen dollars, right.
And once a week was what?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Seventeen forty-nine, because you.
Well, I don't want to say. Once a week is, it depends on where you're picking up trash at, because if you're picking up trash in district four, with all these bays you got there, it's going to let drop a job, and, and the shift above the job real hard, because they're going to dump it straight in the bay. Now we're going to have to go clean them up, because it's going to have to go somewhere.
Right, we're going to call Department of Environmental Quality because it can't dump in bays.
Where, where, where they going to dump it at?
That's where they going to dump it, to a numb.
If they dumping it there, they better not have any letters in there, any mail, because, uh, somebody going to be coming to pick it up.
Alright, well, let me get them to speak again, and then we'll go.
I'll just go out with one comment, thank you, sir. Uh, the six-year concern that you mentioned about CPI, and CPI right now is running about five percent. We have agreed verbally to lower that, to cap it. Uh, that would take place in formal negotiation, I guess, but I believe, Scott, you can correct me, my memory is not as good, mine's not as good as yours. Uh, one of the two owners of ADSI said he would do, we would do a three-year contract with an option to renew for three. So you would be locked in for only three years. CPI would take effect last, obviously, on the two anniversary dates. But, you know, if you like what we're doing, which I'm confident you will, if you select us, and, uh, you can extend it for three years, then you can extend it for four one-year terms under current law, you can have a ten-year contract, as long as the governmental entity and contractor agree. Uh, they changed that a couple of years ago, used to be six was the max, now it's two, but that might hit you in your thinking about CPI of six years as opposed to three. That's odd.
Here is the last one. Yes.
But my, my concern is that I'm, I'm just here because we're taking this contract to have matches. You mentioned the anniversary day, uh, matches anniversary day's June one, next year, twenty-four. That would be the end of our agreement with the city of matches. Uh, we're just concerned if you want us to do this and make a decision and tell us to do it, we got to order our carts, we've got to line up people, we've got to do routing, uh, we got to deliver carts, and we only got to April the twelfth to thirteenth to do that. It's becoming an impossible task, is all I'm saying, I'm just asking for consideration.
Okay.
And, and, I mean, I, I say this much about it, and, and I mean, I don't have, one way or another, we do it for, uh, we, we got to make a decision, but what I do say about it, I always believe in trying to make a fair decision for everybody. You know what I'm saying, I, I, I don't believe in offering, you know what I'm saying, if we was going to put this, that's why then we need to make a decision today. Because if you're going to offer something here today, the other company should have had the same opportunity, we should not be, we, that's why when we put out a bid, now, this is just me for being fair, when we put out a bid, we put everything in the bid that we should have, and if you was going to be negotiating everything, you should be negotiating with both companies. We should not be negotiating with one company because it makes us look like, well, you, we come in here, we giving you opportunity, not giving them opportunity. I'm not on anybody's side, but I'm just saying, when we make a decision, I, that's why you heard me say earlier today, when, uh, came out E nine one one, all involved parties need to be at the table, that's just me running as president, but I'm not the, I'm only one vote. But I believe in trying to do things fair, and that way you can be done fair and in order with everybody.
And Mr. President, I was going to advise, we cannot take what he's saying into consideration. We're limiting ourselves to the proposals.
Well, 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 well. We, we, I'm going to help y'all, we, we going, we going to make up our mind at the next board meeting, we'll have it finished, because when, when you allow somebody to say everything that he said and did, he say we not going to take it in consideration, we already heard it.
That's right.
So what you mean, we going to take it?
Because they didn't know we were going to be here, some of this is going to be discussed.
So, so what we need to do, uh, we got two options, since, what's the name of the company?
ADSI.
ADS got a time limit, today is Tuesday, and if we going to have a special call meeting, I ain't, I don't have a problem with that, but I agree one hundred percent with what the president said, everybody need to be at the table.
Go ahead, Supervisor Milton.
And hold on, one more thing, and I do agree with what he said, because we need to look at, at this money situation too.
Go ahead, Supervisor Milton.
The date of this bid opening was what?
First Monday of the month, what?
Yeah, February sixth.
The cost of this total contract is what?
Are you talking about?
The six-year bid.
Alright, question.
Hold on, I'll give you the first years, because it's. ADSI would be at one point eight mil, they're both at one point eight, one million eight hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars and twenty cents. Metro is one million eight hundred fifty-three thousand two ninety-six fifty-six.
Here's my point, you bid on a one-point-eight million dollar yearly contract, you bid on it two weeks ago, and you know it's a ninety-day window. If I'm bidding on that, I'm here till I get my answer. Shame on them for not being here.
How many counties?
But, I mean, that's a big contract, if you cared, you should be here.
Have you been in discussion with? I didn't see it on the agenda, so I'm the one told them that we weren't going to deal with it because it wasn't on the agenda.
Actually, Scott is sending us.
Well, that's what I'm saying, Scott, that's what, okay, well, we can have, we all need to.
How, how many counties are picking up once a week?
Well, you say?
Seven out of, how many did you?
Seven out of eight.
So they, these people learn how to adapt?
Sir?
That's, these people learn how to adapt?
Well, yes, sir, I'm not saying that all those counties, everybody adapted, some of them adapted, two counties did not have carts to start with, and a year later, they're going to have carts.
Yeah.
They now have carts.
When you say a cart, you're talking about a?
Ninety-five gallon roll-out cart of, well, the city has sixty-four.
Ninety-five, okay.
The ones we have, um, six, the city is thirty cubic yards, I mean, it's thirty gallons bigger than what the city's got. City's got small carts, but they make ninety-five gallon cart, that's what most counties use. Uh, some of the municipalities that I've dealt with before had twice-a-week service, uh, probably business in City Marina, well, they went to once a week. But, once a week saves the serve, and it's, and this is not a negotiation.
But once a week saves the serve and it's, and this is not a negotiation point or anything, nobody does not, no one knows about it. It was in our proposal, not only did we pick the cart up, occasionally if there's bags by the cart, we get those as well. The key word is occasionally, if somebody has ten or twelve bags every week, they have the opportunity to get another cart. But we do pick up extra and everybody's got extra Christmas.
Christmas.
It's, 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 what's the issue?
The other question, he, he brought up a really good point and that, this is just me thinking about what he just said, was in a, in a year and a half, the city will be renegotiating contracts?
Yes.
Is there any way we can get the contract written as such by either party that we are able to do a year and a half and piggyback off the city if we, if, if we decide to go together with them? So the contract is not three years or whatever and it's still off, 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 uh, offline, that we can't do that? Because I, would, would we get a better deal if we, we uh, did a contract with, with the city and the county at the same time?
The only way I can answer you.
In the past, the counties have gotten much better rate when bidding with the city. The problem is the city got a much worse rate, so the city's like, we're not doing that.
Okay, well, this is just, just asking questions. What happened in the past though doesn't always.
In the past, the city and county have worked together.
Yeah, we, we got to seem to have a much better working relationship with the city than maybe past boards have.
Alright, any more questions?
Yeah, I didn't know if there was a comment?
No.
You're supposed to have a long time memory.
I do.
Y'all just sitting there.
Alright, well, this is, well, I tell you what, we can continue to negotiate in the public about what's.
Oh, I know what it is. You're gonna go ahead, that's a question. You said you had seven counties that have one day.
Yes, ma'am.
Did they have that one day before you all started or they started, they started their one day?
Can, uh, the mine hours out there has had one day.
They always had it?
Yeah.
Okay, then you have to adapt, they always had it.
But the municipalities that had to answer what he did there, they changed it once a week because they saw the benefit of the car.
Look, one more question I've got.
Yes, sir.
The containers in the city are what, sixty five gallons?
Yes, sir.
And one to the county would be ninety five gallons.
Yes, sir.
So they'd be?
They hold almost a third more.
The city, the city, I said, I don't know why, but that's how I talk. One issue that one, one final comment, one issue you have with whomever, uh, I think I'm right. Uh, Adams County's contract for disposal with Greenway goes through twenty twenty six. I believe that's correct, is that right Scott? Sometime in twenty twenty six.
Until the option.
Okay, Adams County ends June of this year, I mean, city of Natchez ends June of this year. This is all I was told about the city.
Oh, Greenway.
And Angela too, but if you'll remember too, when we went for, we redbited out again on once a week or twice a week, the change in pricing was, was pretty normal, it wasn't, the board opted, it just wouldn't work, cutting, it wasn't half the price, it was pretty, pretty bad.
It was real close.
Alright, well, alright, but what we ain't gonna do is negotiate, hold on, hold on, we not, we, we gonna, we gonna get, what we gonna do? Hold on, hold on, because it done enough to negotiate. I'm gonna recommend, uh, you can, we gonna either sit down, get together, look over what he said, we'll have a special call meeting and go, or either whatever we need to do there because I mean, I, I'm, I just don't feel like it's right to continue to negotiate over that, and I think it's not fair, I'm gonna let you speak, but I don't think it's right for you and, and, and you own, you're coming here and we started taking, it's like one side of things like this, almost like executive session, we need to hear both people at one time.
And Mr. President, no, he's not right, it's not legal, we got.
It's not legal, that's why we started discussing that, why can't we do it, we cannot do it. We should not be doing it, so I'm sorry, Mr., but that's the end of that conversation because it's not legal.
I just said that, what, what, we could counter limit ourselves with the proposals?
That's what I'm saying, so we can, so we can, and definitely we not trying to be legal, so, you know, something happens and we, and, and whoever is chosen, we understand that we did not vote at time, so we are gonna be able to make that up and not gonna have to hold that coming so we, I think I was at the table realized that we didn't get the vote today, so if the contract is awarded, you might, you might not get everything in place by the twelfth or the thirteenth or whatever, it might be two to three weeks later and we understand that, so we will have to make adjustments with it.
The only problem is that we're worried about, and I want to speak for the board, is we make sure garbage being collected doesn't necessarily be the, you know.
Super nice.
Yes, sir, that's, that's, that's the, that's the continuing.
Alright, well, what's, what you have next?
At nine on return, that's it.
I ain't hope y'all don't know how long it come.
I'm sure you know why. Last, last meeting, the board approved using some American Recovery Act money to do South House Sign Road and this just reflects the budget amendment to allow them to, to spend on that. That's fund oh two five, one six eight, nine five one, it could be oh nine six.
What is oh two five?
It might be oh nine, oh two six.
Oh two six.
I don't know, I'll need to scroll through this, yeah, I think it's oh two six, I apologize. One six eight, nine five one, four hundred and fifty eight thousand. We just made this decision at this board meeting, so I went ahead and added it, it's fund one hundred dash three oh seven dash seven oh one. That's for the airport fund, increasing an additional fifty, fifty thousand dollars.
Any motion? Any motion, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins and Captain Second, properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. Are there any discussion? All in favor, vote by you, sign a I. Any opposed, may have the same right, motion carry now.
He, uh, where do I get that from, Mr. Slow?
Send eight, just send the eight back.
You get that from, uh?
I understand, but I'm telling you, you don't get it out of that phone number, you just call out.
Chat here.
That's the phone number going out, right?
Yeah.
Zero two six, one six eight, nine five one.
Brock, I appreciate you coming out and days off, y'all going out there and cutting these trees and filling the road over the weekend.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming.
No, President, nothing's sorry, there's a opioid, opioid settlement agreement that our opioid council recommended that we approve. Any motion?
You, you heard the request that a, uh, attorney? It's been, uh, motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Miller, uh, kind of had a discussion. There'll be no discussion, all in favor, vote, vote by you, sign a I. Any opposed, may have the same right, motion carry now.
Uh, there's two different orders from the senior judge, uh, one of them is designating the salary for two other employees. We actually thought we've done this last time, but she hadn't sent over the order. Uh, and this sets forth the salary amounts for the rest of the boards, should already be in there because we discussed this at the last meeting. And then there's an order, motion to an order about custody of prisoners, uh, housing about eleven prisoners outside of, of our jurisdiction, both of them been ordered by the court, so we're noting them and putting them on.
Were you the first one to gain the salary increase for what?
It's a setting the salary, um, this is for Sherry Simmons.
We did it last time, she just didn't have it born on.
She just didn't have the order.
Yeah. You heard the request that attorney, taking a motion? Then properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, taking a second. Proper seconded by Supervisor Gray, are there any discussion? There'll be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, sign a I. Any opposed, may have the same right, motion carry now.
And then noting in the, following the order. Sorry, of the custody of prisoners outside of our location.
We need a, uh, uh, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hudson, properly seconded by Supervisor Gray, are there any discussion? All in favor, vote by you, sign a I. Any opposed, may have the same right.
Sorry, nothing.
Alright, we'll come to, I mean, I need to, uh, Southwest Mississippi, uh, planning, uh, district, myself, Supervisor Hudson, and Supervisor, uh, Gray, uh, members of, uh, Tuesday, March the fourteenth, have a meeting in Brookhaven at Mitchell's Restaurant, uh, at sixteen M, need approval of travel. Taking a motion, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Hudson and properly seconded by Supervisor Gray.
Let me say it, under discussion.
Are there any discussion, yeah?
Uh, this year approval of travel does not require any travel funds from the county, uh, Southwest Planning and Development, paying the travel.
Yeah. Yes, sir, you can.
It, it, it don't require no travel for me and Supervisor Gray because we traveling in County B.
Alright.
We just leave it for if anything happens.
Alright, uh, I ready to vote, all in favor, vote by you, sign a I. Uh, any opposed, may have the same right. Alright, we have, uh, this is a letter, a letter of support from, uh, the twenty twenty three teen summit. It'll be here on May the thirteenth. They are asking for sponsors, they will give us a formal request at a later date, Civil Circus, twelve hundred and fifty dollars, bras, uh, that's with eight guests, uh, VIP photos and quarter a page color in a, uh, in a booklet. Bras is seven hundred and fifty for six and, uh, VIP, uh, event sponsors is five hundred bucks, they do have that and it'll be on May the thirteenth.
Who is happening at the summit?
It is, um, the teen summit, twenty three, uh, twenty, twenty twenty three teen summit and some of the, uh, the founders Kendrick Glover, uh, it is Curtis Flower, Sherwood Brown, Dr. Tiffany Lord, those few people that they have.
What they want us to do?
Buy it, uh, sponsor, be a sponsor.
Table or something, I don't know.
Any digital ticket, seven five dollars a piece.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Where is it gonna be?
It is on, be at the Vidalia Riverfront Hotel.
Ain't making a motion, it's super tough.
Question I.
Well, I brought, I brought it to the ten and board. Alright, um. And this is have, this has been at, uh, Mississippi Department of Archives, I think it was in the folder from last time. When the, uh, Texana, the Texana House is gonna be adopted, that was in the house.
National Historic Land.
Yeah, that was in my bill just from last time, this same thing. This is the President Middleton, Middleton. In close consideration, uh, application for federal assistance file by the city of Natchez Senior Citizen Transit System. Executive Order twelve three seven two. This is the top of, uh.
He just wants us, uh?
For federal assistance?
Yeah.
That's how we're playing, they want us to do what?
Review federal, uh, please provide us comments in the five days.
It's over, five days over then.
When did they submit it?
They closed the year, is the application filed by the city, let's see, what is it? It started at ten. It's just been, uh, uh, ten twenty three to nine twenty four.
Well, the letter was dated February the sixth.
Yeah.
From. So he just is saying that in consideration, it's an application for federal assistance file by the city of Natchez on behalf of Natchez Senior Center and Natchez Transit System in accordance with the executive order one two three seven two. Please provide to us your comments within five days, is what they're.
We say.
Any comments will be, will become a part of the application.
He doesn't even have support, no.
Sabrina and Bartley trying to get the answer, she's.
So they have support?
And gossling in the.
A letter of support.
That's not the bar, you're gonna take care of page.
Do we need a motion to this? We need a, uh, vote to give a letter of support, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, properly seconded by Supervisor Hudson. Are there any discussion? There'll be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, sign a I. Uh, any opposed, may have the same right. Alright, I wanna make sure that it is all within the folder. I do want to say my sympathy goes out to Oliverine, also, uh, to, uh, the Wilder family, which my son loves, father, Richard Wilder, and also my daughter also lost her uncle yesterday with, uh, the Bacon family, Mr. Peter Bacon. So I want to, uh, act to keep him in his support of fraud. But for the good of the order, I would say, um, I'm not trying to push, I want everybody to be heard, but when we have twenty minute conversation and twenty five minute conversation repeating the same thing, that push our meeting hour out. I, and I want to say, I hope everybody, I want everybody to have a chance to express theyself and get all their questions answered, but we already been in communication, it's good today, we don't have to have a full communication. What we wanna do is inform the public on what we doing and stay straight. But, uh, twenty and thirty minute conversation with every detail, I don't know if that's always necessary if we trying to do a good meeting and not be here three to four hours. But I don't wanna, not saying that we should not have a full discussion, but I know that some of the things, when we get repetitive, um, I would love for us to work on it, I would love to get us a meeting and we can be out within three hours by twelve o'clock and that's just for the good of the order. Um, and I do have an item to be determined. I need a, uh, I need a motion for close determination, it been moved by, uh, Supervisor Hudson, second by Supervisor Gray. Uh, are we ready to vote, uh, uh, are there any discussion? All in favor, vote by you, sign a I. Any opposed, may have the same right. Any opposed, may have the same right.